Gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Agenda for tonight, our meeting for March 19th, 2019. And at this time, I'd like to have an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Good evening. At this point, are there any walk-ins? All right, saying none. We'll move on to the Report of the Town Administrator. Jim, good evening.
Good evening. Couple things real quick. Don't want to take too much time where it's a busy night. The water treatment plant, as you know, the sand filter portion of that has already been finished. That's in good shape. The sedimentation basins, we got those all drained out. We did find some cracks down there, so we are working to repair those. We are also starting demolition of the track vac this week, so we can put in a new track vac. That's the machine that sucks all the sludge out, cleans those basins. The chemical tanks are going in this week. That's the other part. So we'll have the sand basin done. The chemical tanks should be done, and that will just leave the work in the sedimentation chamber to be finished up. We are on schedule right now to have the water treatment plant back online the first week in April, which should be good.
Very good.
Kevin originally said he could turn it on April 1st, but we just thought turning the water treatment back on April Fool's Day, we'd just avoid that and wait till afterwards. So we won't do April Fool's Day on the water treatment plant. So that's going. We're in good shape there. Well 18, Kev, is that ready or just about?
Yeah, it's running to waste and getting it approved. That's the filtration system over there, but that's pretty much good to go as far as I understand.
So if I got my numbers right, the measurement for iron and manganese is .3. We're getting out of well 18 between .6 and .7. And after it goes through the filtration, it's coming out at about .03 on non-detect. So that's going to really clean up some of that water and really make a difference into what we're putting into the system that eventually builds up and causes the brown water. So that's going along fairly well, and we're fairly happy with that. The other two updates, real quick. IT Director, we're finishing up some interviews this week. We have some very good candidates. We haven't chosen one yet, but we are getting close. So we hope to have that filled in the next week or so.
Okay.
We have filled the position of Board of Health Director. I'm not going to release his name tonight because I don't know if he's let his former position know. I can tell you, he is well-respected. He has a ton of experience, and he is also a Situate resident. So we'll be making that announcement hopefully in the next couple of days. We just want to make sure he's told his old boss before I tell you he doesn't get in trouble. But that was a long search, but we're really happy with the candidate we got. I think the Board's going to be happy, and I know the Board of Health's going to be happy when we get that all finished. So those will be two big positions that are currently empty that will be able to get filled and start moving along. So those are the only two things we're going to do for tonight, and we'll get on with the rest of the meeting.
Questions for Jim? Anyone?
No, that's great with the water.
Good.
The only question I had is, once he gives notice, how long before he's onboard?
Two weeks, but he'll be on. I think we're talking mid to late April.
Anyone else?
Nope, I'm good.
Jim, thank you. So we'll move on to our 7:15 discussion vote. Dribbles Common Vicular License for North Situate, Rob Struzero.
Good evening.
Hi.
How you doing? Come on down. So you're looking for a common vic for opening up dribbles, or what do you, is it going to be?
It'll be another dribble.
Or?
I'm sure that'll come in time. Dribbles, yes.
Oh, good. Want to say a little bit? You've got TV here. You've got people, an audience, a captive audience, you know?
Okay.
Use a little PR if you want.
Yeah, we're renovating, going through it now. We're pretty much going to, you know, clean it out, gut it out, and completely redo it. When it's going to open, I don't know, as soon as everything gets done, maybe a month or so, you know, by the time we get everything, you know, cleared up. Do everything I do down the harbor, then probably a little more ice cream and yogurts in there. Do probably do a small deli sandwiches, you know, type of thing, wraps, that type of stuff. And I'm going to keep it basic and simple and just kind of see what the needs are, what people are looking for, and then I can always adjust as I go. So that's...
Any wheels, like Wilbur wheels, call it dribble wheels?
Absolutely. We'll keep the Wilbur wheels in there for all time. Why not?
Call it David.
I just want to say thank you. See what my Board wants to say, but I just say that to do that, to lose a business in North Situate like we had, and to see that you folks decided to step up and to expand, that's very beneficial to the town, to the members, to kids, frankly.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you, and the dentists, too.
Of course.
Keep them busy also. Questions for the Board?
I just want to say thank you, too. I think it's great. I just, how much, what are you going to renovate? The back area, the front area, the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, by, let's see, let's say, by Thursday, I'm putting in a, I guess you'd call it a kitchen food grade four in there, being poured, you know, in there. I'm just, you know, I'm going to be there for a while, so I might as well just do it soup to nuts, get it cleaned up. New everything, everything is going to be, is going to be new.
Great.
So, hopefully.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
The parents of the playground, thank you. Yeah. Good point. This is wonderful.
Anybody else?
No, no, thanks.
Motion?
Move to approve the Common Vicular License for Dribbles located at 367 Gannett Road, Situate, Massachusetts, 02066, pending the Board of Health approval.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you.
How long do you think it'll be till you open?
I'd like to say summer. No, I'd like to say by the end of April.
Okay, great.
Is what I'm hoping for.
All right.
Thanks again. Good evening. Bye-bye.
Let's move on to a 7:20 discussion vote, a special event application for Situate's 5K-9 race. Rachel Nocleario?
Yeah.
Did I say that right?
You did.
Rachel, good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So you're looking to do a 5K race?
Yes.
K-9, I guess, a 5K-9 race, which is great. So what exactly, where are you looking to have the, for people to understand, where are you looking to run the race and everything?
So we're going to have the meeting point be at Bay State Athletic Club on the Driftway, and it's funded by Driftway Animal Hospital, so keeping it all on the Driftway, running up, looping around New Kent, and coming right back down on those new sidewalks.
So you're not crossing over any major roads, which is pretty much unless, are you crossing over the Driftway or no?
We're not crossing the Driftway.
Not at all, so that's great. And what's the date that you're looking for specifically?
Sunday, May 19.
Good morning, you.
And the timing is exactly, what's the time you're looking for?
7:30.
7:30 for setup and take down around 11:30. So probably like from 9:00 to, is it 9:30? Is that what the start of the race is, or?
8:30 is the start of the race, and we have cops onboard from 8:00 to noon.
Shouldn't be a problem, because even with the transfer station, you're on the other side of the road.
Have contacted them as well, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is going to the dog park? Is that the fund?
Yes.
Great. Are you involved in that?
No, the owner of Driftway Animal Hospital is on the board for that, so we're collaborating in that one.
I have a question, John.
Yep.
So the DPW did have some questions with regards to trash removal and porta potties. Have you answered them, or have you?
I haven't been in contact with them. We have a lot of volunteers, and I'm assuming like there are trash receptacles on the route, as well as the volunteers that will clean up whatever is necessary. They'll be staying as long as necessary to clean up afterward.
Okay. Kevin's here. Kevin, is there any requirement that you have for them from as a race organization?
Well, we don't want all the trash dropped on the Driftway built up or anything to that. Typically, you know, some people, if it's, I don't know what the size of the race is, but it's why some porta potties need be maybe some trash receptacles.
Okay. So as registration comes through, I can work with the number of participants and figure out what we'd need for like trash and?
It's a 5K, so it's a small race in that regard. Is the animal Driftway Hospital, is that going to be open at least if people needed to use the facilities?
I haven't, I can ask.
Because they're kind of the, they're being involved in this, right? One of the organizers?
Yeah, they're the sponsor.
So, you know, you might be able to use their facilities if somebody needed to go to the bathroom, obviously.
Sure, that includes crossing the street.
And that's right. Just the question I brought up, I bring it up to all of them, just, you know, where are the facilities, and who's going to pick up the trash, and you know, who's going to go.
Yeah.
So those are the only things, some of the things you're not thinking about first time through, you know, come up with.
I have a question, too.
Yeah.
Sorry. Do you have another one?
I have a question, just...
Are you running with your dogs?
That was the question.
Is that the intent?
So, yeah, the original reason why I created it was that I like to run 5Ks, but I'm always wondering, like, can I bring my dog to this event? So I figured to make an event that was for people to bring their dogs. So it is a 5K run or walk for those who just want to exercise, but they also can sign up with their dog to run with their dog. So that's part of the liability insurance that Driftway Animal Hospital is funding.
Sponsoring.
Do you know of anyone having done this? I mean, I've never heard of a 5K with animals before.
Not in Massachusetts. I haven't, I mean, looking for the creative names for it. I was looking to see if I was like copying anybody's names and that. Maybe there was one in like Marlboro or something like that, but I haven't really heard of it.
Where are you meeting to set up? Like, where are you registering and doing all that?
Bay State Athletic Club parking lot.
Oh, you're going to be, okay, right down there and then go right up and stay on the south side of the street the whole time? Oh, good. Then, question about the map, and then loop up Driftway by Situate Country Club?
Yes.
So you're not going down near the harbor by St. Mary's? So, all right.
So you're coming off the bike path where Old Driftway goes, and you go down Old Driftway to Old Kent Street, take a left there, and then you're going to connect to?
Yeah, so that loop where like Go Green and Situate Country Club?
Yep.
And then right back onto the same path? Yeah.
Then you'll get back on the bike trail.
Yeah, so it's all off-road?
Yes. Yeah, just that little loop that I've talked to the police about already.
Yeah, that one little street going down to Situate Country Club is?
Yeah, I think we might, yeah. I've talked to the police about the situation there.
I have to say, the thought of, you have 200 participants and 100 dogs, good luck.
Just to that point, and just, it's a unique, I think it's an interesting concept, I'm supporting of it. I would just caution liability, animals with animals running, and how do they act, react if you're going to have a number of people jogging?
Right.
Also, if people don't have an animal, a dog, you know, again, being careful because of potential issues.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm curious, is the intent to close the entire road down from the start to the finish of the race? Is how much space are you going to have to run? I mean, if you're just running down the sidewalk with a bunch of dogs, I just?
I don't think that there will be over 200 participants, but yes, the new sidewalk and everything, we're going to have volunteers and police officers like keeping people on the sidewalk. And with a 5K, I think the only, like, high-traffic point is at the very beginning of the race, and then based on people's speed and everything like that, it really thins out for the rest of the race and on the way back.
Okay. So maybe because the objective really isn't to win, right, as a regular 5K is, because you're with your dog?
Yep.
Is to space those start times so you don't run into that congestion at a start that you have when you run a regular 5K race. I mean, this is the first time you're doing it, it's the first time I'm hearing it, it's just things that are coming to mind, you know, from a safety aspect for everybody. So maybe think about that, too.
Okay, yeah. Staggered start times.
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty. Winners for the meeting.
Any other questions, anybody?
I don't have any.
Anyone move, make a motion?
Move to approve a special event permit for Rachel.
There it is.
Is it the Larcia?
Nocleario.
Nocleario, all right. Yep, sounds right. For the Situate 5K-9 road race on May 19th, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. until 11:30 a.m.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody against?
Good luck.
Thank you. I did have an urge to bark just now.
All right, moving on. Let's go to the 7:30 discussion vote. We're doing it a little earlier, but the Cushing Estates Sewer Connection request, Joe McNally, Bob DiLorenzo, Paul Mirabeau of Ross Engineering. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
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 Hi.
For the record, I'm Paul Mirabeau of Ross Engineering Company. We were the engineers that did the design and approval.
Paul, we'll get us started first.
Paul, sorry.
Thank you for your time tonight. Bob DiLorenzo, 26 Hickory Lane, and this is Joe McNally from 21 Hickory Lane, and we're representing the neighborhood of Cushing Estates. As background, Cushing Estates is, was constructed in about 1995. It consists of 24 homes, six of which are on Tilden Road across the street from Wampatuck School. The remaining 18 are split evenly between Persimmon Drive and Hickory Lane. During the construction phase of our neighborhood, we kept hearing from the builders that the septic system was designed for its simple tie-in into the municipal sewer system. And at the time, when you're buying brand-new construction, you're not thinking much about that, and a lot of it could be builder speak that, yeah, okay, that'll work out, great, and you guys will tie in right away and everything will be fine. Paul, with any questions that you would have to lay out why that seems to be a simple tie-in to the system, would be happy to explain it to you. The way the system works is we all have our own tanks, and about 18, well, probably closer to 16 of the 18 houses that are not on Tilden pump all of the effluent to two leaching fields which are on, two properties on Tilden Road. Within our neighborhood, one system has already failed, I think, two years ago, one on Persimmon Drive. That's one of the reasons we wanted to come to the Board today, to talk about, as we are now a 25-year-old development, because we always thought of ourselves as being very new, you start to realize that what would happen if these systems started to fail, and what would be our recourse in terms of tying into the town sewer. With that in mind, what we did was, we actually met with an information session with Kevin Cafferty about a year ago, and then again, this past January, Mr. McNally and I met with Kevin and Will Branton from the Sewer Commission to talk about, because we had had some of the blueprints, is this true? Would this be a very, very easy tie-in in terms of not digging up roads and so on? And wanted to understand and get from Kevin and Will, is this likely? Could we do this? And also, with all the construction that's going on within town, we didn't want to find that if we started to have problems in two years, we'd come before the Board and they would say, you should have been here two years ago, we could have, we could have done this. So we're trying to be proactive on behalf of our neighborhood to get ourselves tied into the municipal system. We've had three information meetings with our neighbors. You can appreciate, when you look at town meeting, how difficult it is to get people to respond. I think we've done pretty well. Out of what we'll call 18 of the main houses within development that tie into this system, we've met personally with 11 of the 18 homeowners. I can say with confidence that nine were immediately onboard to participating. The other three, there were no objections, but I just think when you look at the investment for the fee and so on, people just wanted to do their own due diligence in understanding what this would cost them. The information system, the information meeting was as much about what we were talking about and what we were learning, and was also an opportunity to share the costs. So we wanted full disclosure for people as to what we understood the investment would be if we were approved and if they chose to tie into the municipal system. Just a comment we'd want on the record, so to speak, in a public domain, where much is said about federal, state, and local government, both Kevin and Will have been extremely helpful and in support of using their professional opinions and giving us guidance on how to do this. That's what brings us here today, making a formal request to tie in. I think our neighborhood is onboard. They understand the costs, and we would open that to any questions you may have for us or for Paul, if you have questions about the system design.
Tony?
Yeah. For the last two or three years, we've been talking about situations like this. As you know, our enterprise fund is running close to a deficit, if not break-even, and we need to start using our current infrastructure to generate more revenue as part of cost savings and expansion plans as well. So I think developments like this have got to be put in our long-term plan to bring people onboard that doesn't have a capital expense for infrastructure and can add revenue to the budget so that it'll help us, you know, keep the budget level. So I think these are great. I know that there's some people that have come before us, before you guys, and I think we just have to kind of get a sense, or I need to get a sense, maybe you guys know, how much capacity do we have? You know, this isn't a huge amount. I mean, it's 20, you know, 20 or 30 houses or whatever have you, and how much do we need to make sure that it works fiscally responsible, as well as not using up all of the usage for the other developments in parts of town that we're looking to develop as well. So I think we need to do stuff like this, and I think we need to do it in our budget plan moving forward every year. So I think it's a great opportunity for us. I think we just have to tighten up kind of capacity and numbers and figure out what, when you do to take the next step, my two cents.
So there is 24 homes we're talking about. One is already connected in because of an incident.
Is that the one we did in 16, 2016?
Yes. And I believe two others are not currently tied to the common leaching field, so they would have individual connections, I believe.
So 24 total?
One's already in, two are not on the common system, so it brings down 21.
21, okay.
So one question for Bob, or whoever, is this all, the whole unit's going, right? It's not like we've got 15 that are going and four that aren't going? How?
That's my question, too. Well, I guess, like I said, when we tried to, the reach out that we had to the neighborhood, some people didn't attend any meeting. For those that attended, we had maybe nine out of 12 or 10 out of 12 that said, we definitely want to do this. I think the other two or three would be inclined. And again, I think for the remainder of the neighborhood, once they found out that there was an opportunity like this, it exists, I know I would do it, you know?
Yeah, I know betterment's, you have to do it if, what is it, 80% of the group?
That was, what's the percentage?
75%, 75%.
75% or 80%? Yeah. I don't know if this goes hand in hand with that. I wouldn't think so, but...
I think, and when we were seeking guidance from Kevin and Will, I think, I think, I think it was more of, the more people you can get in support of this, the better your case before the Board.
Right.
Great. Curran?
Just two things. One is that, you know, in the backup, it did, this proposal was supported by the Sewer Department and the DPW as far as capacity, and am I interpreting what you wrote correctly, Will?
Yes, we are a little bit limited on our capacity.
Yeah.
So there's a bit of a balancing act and a cost benefit to weigh there, but this project is relatively small.
Okay. And I have, I have to just make a comment. In the backup also, in 1994, when this project was built and there was a sewer moratorium in place, this hookup was a condition on which this could be developed. How it was not hooked up at, you know, to this point, I assume it's because everybody had to make other accommodations and it was working, but it was a condition of the original permit that was to be hooked up to town sewer.
Correct. That's correct, and the best of intentions, and sometimes things break down in the process. But at the time this letter was written, none of us were even living there yet. So you try to go forward, you go backwards and say, so was it the town's responsibility to notify us? Were we supposed to notify the town? How was that process supposed to work?
Well, I knew how the leaching field would work, so...
And you were, it wasn't, wasn't an issue, yes.
So to me, it was originally intended to be hooked up. To Tony, to Tony's point, it's exactly, if we're going to be expanding, we'd love to get residents who've been here 25 years, and if the sewer and DPW are onboard with the engineering of it, then I think it makes sense.
Barbara, you want to go first?
Sure. You want me to?
Sure.
So I'm in line with Karen and Tony, actually. I think, you know, we've been saying for three or four years now that we need a plan to bring 20, 30 homes online as we try to evaluate our capacity in the sewer, because, you know, we've got things set aside with all the different developments that are out there. You factor that into a lot of your capacity numbers, right? Well, like, based on what goes through the planning board, what gets approved. I just want to make sure I'm correct in understanding how we project capacity.
Yeah, our current capacity is limited, and we are anticipating a couple major projects to go online in the future with Cold Weathers and Biggie Country Way. So some projections need to be updated and revised as those come online and bring additional flows.
All right, but it's the balancing act, right? That's a couple of years down the road, and we've got the Cedar Point project that, and I'm now going to look at Kevin, because this is all factoring into my decision, you know, the Cedar Point project, which is supposed to alleviate a lot of that.
20,000 gallons a day is the estimate. That's on pod, I believe, April 21st or 24th.
For an RFP?
No, for construction.
Oh, so this year?
Yes, this year.
All right, perfect.
And I just would bring up, we've had an extremely wet spring so far, and we had an extremely wet fall, which is a lot wetter than usual, so our rolling average at the plant is about 1.55. Will? Yeah, 1.55, I don't know, 1.6. So we, our max is usually about 1.6. So we're way up there for our rolling average.
Right now, just because of, okay.
And slow infiltration.
All right. Because I sort of look at it the same as, if it was approved within the whole process of permitting, it seems like a relatively easy, looking at the backup. You know, maybe, Mr. Mirabeau, you could explain a little bit what it would entail. I don't know what the cost of the town would be, but it, to me, it seems like it's going to help us kind of balance some of our...
It's probably zero.
Okay.
When we designed the subdivision, there wasn't a moratorium, but we were told that when the moratorium was lifted, they allowed us to go in.
Excuse me.
So what we did with the design was, these are, all these moonlines are force mains, and they all go through a structure here, and then the whole front of the property along Tilden Road is where the individual leaching trenches were, and all those force mains come down to this structure. And then there were 15 pipes that went down, and they went into the individual leaching areas. What we did during construction was, we actually constructed a sewer manhole in Persimmon Drive, and we connected it to the existing sewer manhole in Tilden Road. This purple line is the existing sewer line. This is the existing sewer line here. Again, the blue is the force main. If you were to open up that structure, you'd look down and see 15 two-inch pipes. It's a, it's a simple matter of just cutting those pipes and let the water drop down into this manhole, and then it flows into this one, and out into sewer in the street. So no work has to be done within the layout of Persimmon Drive. These force mains are all on private property. These houses in yellow are fed by gravity to the individual leaching areas that are in front of the homes. Most homes are 30 feet back from the street. These are about 80 feet back, because these are all the leaching areas. What we did was, there's a series of manholes on private property, and these houses were pulled by gravity into this line, and the only line we had to connect the sewer is from this sewer manhole to the existing sewer manhole on the street.
And then the residents are responsible for flipping a switch, so to speak, from their current system into the maintenance.
So this will be done by private funds. Again, this section of sewer connection is already in place, was built. Now what we need to do for the gravity systems is to build a sewer pipe from this manhole to the line of the street, which is about 25 to 30 feet.
Kevin or Will, if we end up tapping into that at some point, do we own the entire system, or does it stay with the association in that we only own from the point of the manholes?
Well, that road has become a, was a private road. It's become a public road. So we would have to look at the legality of that. We didn't install that system. Obviously, we would want to keep the system, the manholes up to the sewer manhole, the individual force mains. But it's, it's something that I've looked at.
I only ask that because you'd mentioned two-inch force mains, which I assume were probably with inspector, are they smaller, and that would be something that we would end up buying potentially if we owned the street and the system and the connection fees, something that we'd want to look at engineering-wise.
So I think what we would probably just take ownership of is the actual manhole, the individual services, it'd be per house. It wouldn't be like a typical gravity service. We do it home to the, to the edge and then to the other side if it's a pump system.
Okay, Kevin, where are we taking responsibility, from the green line to the street?
That's what I think he's saying, yeah.
Okay. So, the great thing about going last is you guys asked all my questions. So we have a private line and a public right-of-way. You guys really aren't, you're a little better off, in my opinion, than you were with the existing thing, with the existing common leaching field, but what happens if there's a failure between any one of your houses to the green line? And Bob, you can, okay, great, I can pay my share, but a neighbor might not be able to. If this was laid out today, and I was on planning board or something like that, I would say, run a main down that's going to, in the middle of the road, not on private property, so we don't have this finger pointing. This is, this is a lot like a spaghetti line. This is, this is a lot like a spaghetti line. Because we could, there'd be some finger pointing, who can afford to pay if there's a problem? And I don't, I don't think there'll be a problem on the green line or, I don't know about the yellow line, I have questions about that too, if that's on a private... It's not perfect.
How does it work right now? I assume you have an association, not like a condo association, but a homeowners' association?
It was a homeowners', it was a homeowners' association, but, you know...
No, it's not that.
It's defunct.
So it's basically every house that has a leaching area, or not leaching area, a septic system that ties into the leaching area. If something fails when you want to sell it, you're responsible for making sure that it's connected to the leaching area off of Tilden Road? Is that how it works?
Today, correct.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, the cost from the house to the leaching area, whereas...
Well, this isn't too much different. It's just, it's, it is a little different, but you don't know who's really at fault. If it's, it's just, in my opinion, it's not perfect. And when I first read the backup, I reached out to Kevin. And for 20, and I remember this being built, but for 20 years, people would go before the Board of Health and they had to be in failure. Their only alternative to tying the town sewer was a failure or a tight tank. And I get the revenue and all that. And what's good about this is they're not being built today and tying right in. You guys have paid taxes for 25 years to the town and your, you know, your existing homes. So I, that's a lot better than something being just built in and immediately tying in. But there've been a couple of people who've come before you, maybe not as organized as you guys. And guess what? They're, they're still, they're not, they're not tied in. So if we do it for you, I'd, I'd like to call those people back in and say, all right, Leo, come on in, tie in Bitter Sweet Lane. You know, and you guys have had your meetings and all of that, so you're further ahead. That's, that's all I have right now, I think.
So Paul, let's say I'm in Lot 15 right now, okay? Around there, the cul-de-sac up in the, the top of it. So their leaching area or their pipe goes out to the force main, is that it? So they must have a pump in their house that pumps it to the force main? And then the force main pumps it up?
Yeah, that, that's a septic tank, a pump chamber, and it pumps it into the two-inch line that comes to the structure, comes down here and goes out into their leaching area in the front.
I was not doing that today.
So what they have is a pump system. The only difference is that rather than the leaching area being here, it's out front.
So there is the possibility that if a main was put down, it would have to be a force main because of the gradient, it sounds like. But you could put a for, a main down the center of Hickory and down the center of Persimmons. You've got the, the ties, the laterals that can tie into it potentially. And that way, if the town were to take it, it would be a little more costly, but then you could drop the pipe and then pump it up.
I don't know, we could, I'd have to look at the elevations to see if we could get it by gravity from the cul-de-sac out to Tilden Road. Because Persimmon's not so far from Tilden Road.
But that's, that's a design issue, is what I'm saying. My concern is that it's a 25-year-old design system, which was intended, apparently, I don't know, you designed it, Paul. I'm not, I'm just saying, it just seems now, if it were done today, we'd drop a pipe down the middle of it, whether it's a force main or whether it's just gravity, and then you, you go into it. But, and maybe that's the easier solution. Getting to Sean's point, I can't vote on it tonight because we've had people come in. Dom Darkangelo, Jamie Mankiewicz, Leo Costello were the ones that I've said I couldn't vote on it because we were under issues with our capacity. So I would propose, I think it's a great idea, which we talked about, connecting, but I actually want to have a meeting about capacity. And I want real numbers so that we can determine what we can do. Because I'm inclined to say, for, whether it's for your neighborhood or for the others who've come before us, who we've told no, I'd like to give them an opportunity to be able to say, this is what we're looking to do. Because some of them have pipes in front of their house and are saying no right now. And I'd rather find that out. But I need to know about capacity, because that's been the issue in the past, that we thought we had a capacity and then the numbers have gone up because of I and I. And, you know, people complain about Toll Brothers and when we were told actually we're going to be able to bring in maybe not just one additional phase, but maybe two. So I'd like to have clarification from the sewer department before we can actually make a vote. That's my own preference, but I, I think this is a good idea to the point that certainly, you know, it was supposed to have been tied in once the moratorium was taken off. And obviously, I was never aware of it. I don't, I don't think anybody on this board knew it, otherwise we would have said it should have gone first. But like anything, it was in the writing and unfortunately, it was never followed up on, so. Yes, Ma'am?
If I can, John, as I was going through my files today in preparation, we stored another letter reference to the property that failed, which was 26 Persimmon.
That's on the corner, I think, right? Or was it?
No, further, further back in the, and this was dated March 4th, 2016. And it's just, and I'll submit this and give it to whoever needs it, but there's a statement in here that, and as such, property at 27 Persimmon Drive have rights to connect to said public sewer system to sewer rules and regulation. And it seemed to be driven by the fact that we were now public streets. So as we were looking at this, we had, we had one document written in '94 that says, you need to, guys need to be on this right of way as a requirement of your development. And another note written two years ago that says, because you're public streets, you have rights to the municipal sewer system. So I totally understand your issues with, with, with capacity. If I can be so bold. What I, what I would, if we could vote a contingency, I think we'd be fine with that. Because we have the rights to tie in if we said contingent upon flows going down to an acceptable level, contingent upon Cedar Point coming online. Because I, I'd have a feeling as this meets and other people come forward, we can find ourselves, you know, at the back of the line again and having to go through the whole process over again, which I don't think you'd want us to do.
Just one quick comment for Nancy. Also, John, to your point, we should get together with Nancy, look at the financial package with the enterprise fund and see really how much do we need to, you know, to work in this, not just this year, but for five years out or what have you. To Bob's question, you know, you're in line right now, so I don't think you have to worry about anyone jumping ahead of you. I think Sean's point is, people have come on before you and said that. And that's, you know, I don't think you'd have to worry about anyone jumping, like you said, jumping in.
Yeah, no, and Bob, that's my whole point. You know, I had a, Dom Darkangelo, Officer Dom, said, can I tap in? And we said, no, we don't have the capacity at the point. And we were kind of like pulling off. And then Jamie Mankiewicz came in with his wife and, like, the pipe's right there. I said I couldn't do it unless we had the discussion. So for purposes of, like, first and time and equity, I'm like, I'm not going to vote on anybody until we have this discussion. Because frankly, you've certainly given us information that this should have been tied in right out of the gate when the moratorium was taken off. That was what was supposed to be, based on the condition. So yeah, I'm not going to let anybody leapfrog you. I can promise you that, yeah.
And Mike, Kevin, my concern is to make sure that's up to code or, you know, we accept it, that that's ours and that's...
Well, we can put contingencies so the third body does an inspection, make sure there's not a few moment infiltration.
Right.
And that the pipe is up to date. And if there are any issues, that the pipe is addressed prior to us taking acceptance of it, what the type of the system.
Or we, could we just take it from the, from the manhole?
We could take it from the manhole, but if that manhole is a dry manhole, we should check that out also. If it's a dry pipe that leads to our manhole, we still want to make sure that that's...
Still good.
That's clear. So somebody should probably check it with a camera or a pump and do a pressure test on it. I don't know if they did a pressure test on it 25 years ago. Do you, Paul, the manhole and the pipe and stuff when they put it in?
They did a pressure test on it. It was fine. It was a pretty short run. It was fine.
Yeah, so.
No, and I just...
It wouldn't be a big deal if we did enough pressure test on it to make sure it's all set.
Can I just make two quick comments? There's 15 houses that are on the force main. The work to tie these, all these houses in at that manhole with the green line, it's probably one day's work. And so if assuming all 15 wanted to tie it at the same time, you'd be able to get that revenue pretty quick.
Yeah, you're right. No, it's, I agree with you. I just want to make sure that, so that people understand, if we just accept it the way it is right now, we get the benefit as a town from the connection fee. Whereas if we end up having to, have to put pipe down, then we don't make the money that goes into the sewer fund. It actually goes in for the building of it, which happens to be your betterment in laying the pipe. So that's what you're raising, which is right.
But John, are you saying that this project could be on the top of the list for connections?
My feeling is it certainly is on top of the list for connections. And I think, you know...
Yeah, Karen was right when we did the approval. District purposely designed this way, so when the, we all thought the moratorium would be lifted a lot sooner than it was. And they told us, well, you can design it this way. We got the easements approved by the Board of Health and they said when the moratorium was lifted, they could tie in.
Yeah, no, I, and that's what I was saying. There've been some people who've come before you, smaller ones. And then my feeling is, you know, I'd like to...
They were ones and twos, though.
Yeah. And, and again, this should be a discussion we're going to have, and I think we'll put it on something after town meeting. I think it would make sense in April to, to have, devote a good hour discussion and invite people to come in again, so we can have the discussion in full. At least, that's my thought.
And we're going to have to look at the sewer policies, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my point.
For a long time, it was...
We've got to get a little comprehensive plan together, that this is what...
Yeah, because if we're going to bring on 20 homes a year, whatever that number is, whatever that safe number is, we need to understand what the parameters are based around bringing them on and be consistent. So I'm fine with that, just so we have some better numbers. But certainly, I think this is a unique situation as well. I want to get a grip on the numbers.
So like I said, our, sorry, did anybody, Karen, anything else?
No, no. I think having a comprehensive conversation, it's a month out. I know that you want to get it buttoned up today, but you do have a unique set of facts.
So what I will propose is this, that we will have, we have a, April 8th is our town meeting. And then, I don't know what our next meeting is after that. So we'll have it, and I don't know if we have a lot on that meeting, unfortunately. Lorraine's not here right now. But I would propose that we'd have a discussion, Kevin, Will, Nancy, sewer policies, the numbers and finding out our capacity. Kevin, are we having, or Jim, are we having the Cedar Point, is that coming, any meeting in April? The, that discussion?
Probably after town meeting.
After town meeting, okay.
The next meeting's April 23rd, is in the schedule.
So April 23rd? April 2nd?
After town meeting, though.
No, before town meeting.
No, but the next one, after town meeting.
After, right. About 2:00 P.M.
All right, so I'll find out whether the, probably the, the next one, the 23rd. And then we'll have a discussion on that with a potential vote with a follow-up, the following meeting, which will probably be May, whatever. Okay? And we'll make sure that if what we don't discuss or vote on the 23rd, we'll have a discussion and a vote in May. Okay?
So for purposes of me getting back to the neighbors, that would be, that would be the vote date?
Yep.
You, we would be notified?
Yep. I'd have them come in for both the 23rd to discuss it, because I want to make sure that the other people who've come before have an opportunity to make sure that they've given enough ample time to be able to show up too, if they want.
Okay, so we will hear back?
Yes.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you. Hey, Paul, I've got a question for you. At the end of Persimmon's Drive, there's like a gigantic, like, stone entry, I think, there. What's that from? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, the driveway from Cushing Hall Estates.
Yeah, yeah. He's actually further up on person.
Yeah.
Right here. You have someone growing?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What was that from?
That was one of the pillars for Cushing Hall.
Yeah. Cushing, you mean your estate or?
No.
It was a school, it was a school, it was a school for boys, I think.
Okay.
Way back in the day, yeah.
How was that? Always wondered what that was.
I was sure Cushing built it. It was a huge building there.
Did you guys tear it down to build this or was it there?
No, it was torn down. Some, some of them went into a 40-beat prior to this point.
No kidding?
It didn't work and it came in and did this.
Had an awesome...
I was always curious, did it really?
Oh, yeah, I used to play basketball in it, yeah.
That's what I knew every day.
Oh, thanks. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. All right, let's move on to a 7:50 discussion at 7:45 of a vote, Jamie's Pub Sewer Agreement. I see Ralph Constantine is here. Mr. Constantine, if you don't mind?
I don't...
I don't say it.
Was this in the hallway? I don't see it.
I missed that.
I thought that was him. The guy looks like him.
That was him, but I made a mistake.
Do we know if an invitation was, or a notice was given to him or...
We told them we met with them, we're going to have them on your agenda for this week, so...
I'll tell you what, let's skip over it and see if he appears.
He emailed. He did get emailed, okay.
All right, so we'll just skip over that and give him a little time, maybe for a second call. Now, let's move on to a discussion vote. Kathy, poll hours for the annual town election. Kathleen Gardner, I'm sorry, Kathy, apologize. Our town clerk, good evening.
Good evening. Oh, madam. Thank you. So on March 18th is the annual town meeting and we have...
March 18th?
Oh, May 18th, sorry. Sorry. We're done?
It's actually...
We're all done, it's over.
May 13th is the annual, special town meeting, right? And then the elections on the 18th.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, my goodness, and April 8th is the annual town meeting. Okay, we got that straight. So we have a contested race for the selectman position, too. There's four people running. And of course, the dead exclusion question.
Yep.
All right. So that being said, in 2000 and January of 2015, we had a special election for the overrides for the school and the public safety building. We had 37% turnout of 5,500 voters. The poll hours then were 7 to 6 P.M. I requested 5. It's all, you know, it's, it's whatever you guys think. I mean, we have, absentee ballots will be available. Absentee ballots for town elections is a little tighter window than state elections. So we have about a three-week period of absentee voting before the election. If all goes well with programming and printing of the absentee ballots, they'll be in probably the last week in April. So there's plenty of time for absentee voting, so I'm just requesting 7 A.M. for poll hours to 5 P.M. If you think 6 is more appropriate, we can, so...
I, you know, normally with a, less of a, an anticipated turnout, I would agree with the 5. But I would anticipate that there will be a turnout, if not for the election, certainly for the dead exclusion override question.
Right.
And I, I think I would prefer to say 6 above.
If we go 6, that's fine.
I know, there are always gonna be stragglers who come in after the fact.
Right.
But, um, I think, given the nature of the question, and that's an important thing, to at least give people an opportunity, an extra hour.
And I have a backup warrant with 6 p.m. on it, so I'll get-
But that's just my own, Kathy, I don't know what the other board-
I understand. No, I understand, you know, I try for 5, and if we go 6, that's, that's fine, too. It's whatever you think, it's good to go back and forth with this.
How does everybody feel about that?
When was the last time, and I'm not suggesting this, but I'm just curious, when was the last time we went to 7 or 8?
Not since I've been here. We've never gone to 7 or 8.
Really?
Just state elections. State elections are set 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. But, I, I don't think I've ever worked here when we've gone to 7 p.m.
I think it's always been 6, until recently.
Yeah, I think the latest has been 6.
I mean, I agree, I, um, I always worry about people that work till 5, and it is a big event, and I think we're starting to see a little bit more voter participation just because of the climate of our country. You know, we've been struggling with that for a long time, but I think it's kinda-
Correct.
Moving a little bit in a different direction right now, which is good.
And I, I think it's great. Let's, I just wanna make one thing clear, though. There is no early voting in place for town elections, and that is up to the local election authorities, the Board of Selectmen, what have you. The reason why I don't push early voting and request early voting, it's, it's an, it's... When I think of the timeframe from when candidates can withdraw from the ballot for this year, it's April 18th. The next day, or that night at 5:05, when all the other offices across the country are closed that I deal with, I need to get that sample ballot to my printer and the people that program the chips for the, um, the thumb drives for the election machines. So, that tight window to get those absentee ballots in gives the printer a week, and I'm ordering, you know, a couple thousand ballots for early, uh, excuse me, for absentee voting. So, to spend the money on early voting, which is two weeks before an election, when the absentee ballots for a town election will be here three weeks before, would be wasteful. There's really no point, you know, you're, if you're not gonna be able to be here on Election Day, you can vote absentee at my office. You know, are you gonna spend another couple thousand dollars to print early voting ballots and start early voting? The only difference is you need an excuse. Am I gonna take airline tickets or doctor's notes? No, you're just swearing that you're not gonna be able to be here on Election Day when you fill out that absentee ballot request form. So, let's, I just wanna make that clear, that there's no early voting for the town election, there is absentee voting three weeks before, okay? Which is sufficient time for everybody to be able to vote. You can request a ballot to be mailed for a family member, or to yourself, up until noon the day before the election, which would be Friday. So, there's no reason not to vote, there's plenty of time, and with the poll hours being until 6 o'clock, it's, I think it's more than sufficient. That being said-
Let us continue, are you guys have something?
I just one question. Do you have any, I don't know if you've checked this, do you have any data, how many people came from that 5 to 6, um, window, when we extended it the last of?
Uh, geez, I just looked at the hourly count, too, before I came. It went from, um, it ended up, um, the write-ins brought it from 35% up to, like, there was like, it was 4,900 people on that hourly count sheet that I looked at, but the final total was 5,500, um, because of write-ins and, uh, not write-ins, auxiliary ballots that can't, couldn't go through the machine for some reason, but, um-
So, it's not actual traffic?
It was like, it was, I think the hourly count was like, 100 people.
In that final hour?
In the two, I think it was, I think it's two hours that I was looking at.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
In the last, uh-
At the la, I looked, I didn't see the last hour, I looked at the last two hour, then on a line, yeah, I think it was, probably about 100 people, if that. I don't even know if it was that much. But, um, and that's fine, 6 o'clock.
Yeah, whatever you think.
I'd say 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't do it before 6 o'clock. You know, I guess the question is, if you wanted to extend it past that?
I, I think with the combination of absentee ballot, if you are, if you do have a job and you're not gonna get back here, you have time during, you know, try to find a time during the week to do it. I think that's a good accommodation.
Shaun, what did you say, 6?
Yeah, 6 o'clock is fine if she has the staff and, and-
I do have staff.
Yeah. I think that's good on a Saturday, I think that's sufficient.
Motion?
What times, in the morning? 7?
7.
Wanna make it 6?
Don't do that to Kathy.
No, no. Don't do it to the candidates.
Motion?
Please.
Chair? Motion to set poll hours for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 18th, 2019, at the Cituit High School Gym, located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way, from 7 a.m. to 6 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Cernan. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. Can I ask, um, one more announcement on the deadlines for voter registration for these events coming up? It's very confusing, I know, but just, is it okay if I just give you the dates?
Absolutely, yep.
So, tonight at 8 o'clock is the deadline for the special, for the annual town meeting, alright? April 8th, town meeting.
The deadline for what?
Voter registration. So, if you're not already voted, registered to vote, or you need to change your address or your name because you got married or whatever, these are what these deadlines are for.
That's tonight?
Uh, tonight for the annual town meeting.
You have 6 minutes.
Okay, yep. It takes like, 10 seconds. So, in the special town meeting, on April 8th, the deadline is Friday, March 29th, from 8:30 to noon in my office, and noon to 8 p.m. at the Public Safety Building, if you are not registered to vote already. For the May 13th special town meeting, the deadline to register to vote, if you're not already registered to vote, is 8:30 to noon at the Clerk's Office, and noon to 8 p.m. in the Public Safety Building. The deadline to register to vote for the annual town, at the annual town election, would be, um, April 26th, from 8:30 to 4 p.m. in the Town Clerk's Office, which is a Friday, and from 4 to 8 p.m. at the Public Safety Building. And that's it.
I may have missed it, Kathy, when you said to register for the special town meeting on Monday, May 13th, what's the date? I thought I caught the hours, but not the-
Um, it's the, I'm sorry, I might not have said it. Nah, Friday, May 3rd is the deadline for the special.
Register for the special.
Mm-hmm, the May 13th.
To vote on the 18th, is what date again?
Um, April 26th.
April 26th.
And that is also a Friday. Okay? And I'll, these are all posted on the website, okay? On my page. Alright? Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, one more, the absentee ballots, there's so many days, so when, when can people get them, and when do they have to come?
Um, I'm hoping to have the ballots, let's see, the 19th is a Friday, that's when I send the information, so a week from that is the 26th Friday, the 26th, so I'm hoping that following Monday. But, maybe 20, the 26th on Friday.
So, some, end of April, up until?
That first, first Monday, first week of May. Almost three weeks before. It's a tight, tight window with the, with the ballot printer.
So, the absentee ballot stops to?
Oh, at noon the day before.
At noon the day before, okay.
Noon Friday, so we'll be open till noon on Friday. Okay?
So, all you high school seniors that turned 18, go register.
Get out there.
10 minutes.
Yeah.
No, that's the annual town meeting.
For the other one, yeah.
For the other ones.
Lot of decisions.
Kathy, thank you.
Alright.
Kevin, you're up next, DPW contracts. Kevin Cafferty, Shaun McCarthy, our engineer and our DPW director. And our first discussion vote is to award a contract to Sea Knott Corporation for Parking Lot Improvements at the Egypt Beach Parking Lot. The amount that we have listed is for $265,000, gentlemen?
Yes.
Alright, so this is a part of the, wasn't it part of the CPC funding, or no, beach?
It's actually, uh, through the beach funds.
Beach funds, right?
We, because we were slow, you know, we were slow and had a lot of free time, we designed it in-house, so it's an in-house design that, uh, went up to bid, and so-
Nice.
It's, uh, similar to the project we did at, um, in Humrock, and we are adding a shower, um, at Egypt Beach.
An outdoor shower, it's at the-
Outdoor shower, the same type as, that we have at Peggity.
Yeah.
So, um, looks like a good project.
Any chance we could add a bathroom?
I'd love to, sure. I'd, I'd be all over that, that'd be great.
No, I mean, is there space? Is it designed so that we could put a bathroom there at some point in time?
Would you put it over near the pumping station?
That's what I was just gonna say, yeah. Maybe directly into the well. Although, it was just rehab, but yeah, either attached to the side of that building, or, or in its proximity anyways.
It is tight, we didn't include anything specifically for it. You know, that parking lot's in bad shape with the asphalt, but, um-
Is it just something that you could, in addition of-
It could be something, you could buy a precast unit and put it right in place and tie into the sewer in the future.
Yeah, 'cause we could do another funds for the Beach Commission to do something like that, which would make sense.
You know, I'd like to have whatever we did do, do for all the beaches, you know, to, you know, all the ones that are able to, you know, have it similar, so...
Jim will wanna come to our beaches from South Cituit, and when the kids need to go to bathroom, you know, they're gonna say, hey, we gotta go here.
Instead, they don't use porta-potties?
Well, I'll leave it at that.
They're okay on Friday, not so good on Sunday.
I see Jim just kinda like, hanging out in the water for a little while, then I might not wanna go in, you know?
So, Kevin, my point is the design, the parking spot that you have over here, close to the-
So, we may have to eliminate a couple parking spots to put something in. That's all right.
But you could do that later.
We could do that later, we could cut it out, and hopefully, maybe we could put a precast unit in, or drop something in and make it work.
We've investigated a precast building that you would just drop and hook the utilities up to, rather than constructing walls. Yeah, they do have-
Did you say you've looked into that?
Yeah, we've looked at it, uh, in the past, um, for different locations, just to get a feel for the cost. I don't remember what it was, it was a couple of years ago, but they do, they do make them with different setups internally. How many bathrooms are you looking for, or stalls?
Great. I got a question, just, um, is there a drop-off, I see, you know, area, so that when you pull in, you have an ability to kinda like, let people drop off their stuff, their gear, while they go get a parking space, or is it pretty tight?
Um, the, the aisles are wider than typical.
Okay.
We are picking up 22 parking spots, um, with the new parking layout.
But do you understand, like, if you're coming with all the stuff and you, you don't, if you're living in the area, it's easy to get a, a wagon to tote your stuff down, but if you're driving with a truck or a car, you got all the gear in the back, and I'm just wondering, is there like a drop-off there?
Is not a, not a set lane for that, but there is enough for two cars to pass, if you look on the beach side right there. Um, it's wide enough for two cars to pass, so if somebody stopped, hopefully, they'd be able, people would be patient enough to get by and let it go around.
The entrance where the shower is, too, is all striped off, so that-
How you gonna get, somebody's parked right here?
You don't have vehicles parked there.
Yeah, that's a hell of a drop-off.
You might wanna think about pushing one of those parking spaces.
Yeah.
The closest to the, um, to the-
Boardwalk there.
The shower, the outdoor shower.
Yep.
I mean, I'm just telling you, if, if, it's like, when I drive to Minehead or Humrock, I'm usually pulling up in front, dropping all the stuff, and then going to find a parking space, because totting it back and forth is a real nuisance, and people will notice that, they'll be like, jeepers, you put parking spaces directly next to the walkway on, and I'm just telling you.
I think that's a good idea.
Might think about just sacrificing one of those, so you have the ability-
We could change that pretty easily, 'cause it's just painting, I mean, we'd probably have to give up-
We'd have to give up two spots, 'cause we'd just slide the extra handicap over one,
and we'd have to have the, the stripe for the handicap, and maybe we can make one as a drop-off area.
Just lose one of the ones on the, um, on the bottom, and just push it down for the disability at, um, parking lot.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, are you gonna need two extras now, than what we had? We had 73 prior, now we'll have 95.
That's great.
That's really good.
You're gonna leave it, there is that access road that the people walk, a lot of people go up, it's a little closer to Minehead, Man Hill, we call it, maybe?
Yeah, it's got a-
Yeah, so we have hash marks here, so there'll be no parking in front of that as well? You guys are familiar with it?
Yeah, he does.
There's that little walkway.
Oh, cutting through, yeah, right there.
Yeah, it's a long area.
That is straight down, right, for no parking, exactly. So, with that walkway open.
Can you tell me a little bit about the projects? Is it just gonna be grinding and then asphalt?
Complete removal of the pavement.
Alright.
Including the top few inches, when we did the rehabilitation to the pump station last year or the year before, the material that's out there is awful.
Oh, right, it's been bad for a while.
Back on, so as part of the project, like in Humrock, that top foot will be removed. A GeoGrid will go down to stabilize the soil. It's a manufactured material, yep. 12 inches of new gravel will be brought in, binder and top will be placed after it's shaped. Everything will pitch, um, it's to the north, but it's to the south, as you're looking at the plan.
Okay.
North, towards the wetland and the woods, and then we've installed a stone swale to improve water quality before it gets into the wetland, which doesn't exist now.
Oh, good.
Okay. Does this particular contractor plan on paving it himself? Was it in the spec that he paves it himself, or?
No, but I saw his sub-listed-
Who was that?
Nacella, I believe.
Are you familiar with their asphalt?
Yeah, they've done some project in the past.
They've done some work.
Some patching.
Who did 123?
Nacella.
Was it them?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, I don't know if I'd put that on them.
Shaun, quick question.
Alright. Like, you want?
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, and, and that's why we're putting the GeoGrid in the, in the soil, to get a good, stable base in the design. Um, we did have some problems on 123 with settlement with the pipes, but we didn't rebuild the road.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're right, yeah, this is a little bit different, but, you know, if it was Edwards or somebody like that, it'd be like, great. But, and then the speed pumps going back?
No.
Okay. Nope, that's it. Shaun, or Kevin, um, the, the spaces, currently, they're kind of at an angle. There's a lot of kids that are always walking around there, is it, and you get better view, I think, if it's, instead of being perpendicular to the side, if it's angled, is there any way to do that?
We could, we didn't get as many.
How many did you lose? I mean, would you, I mean, I'm talking mostly just on this stretch.
Keep those out of the way.
Going in on the northerly side.
On the side.
And you're a drop-off?
I think the setup is the same as down in Humrock with the, you know, the pole straight in, as opposed to the-
Yeah, but Humrock is, is pole, it's perpendicular, it's not at an angle.
It's not at an angle, and they based it off, it worked in Humrock, so that's how.
It's just kinda congested, and with kids walking around there.
We didn't-
I mean, I can't imagine, I don't know that you'd lose any if you went on this, on the, um, north side of the property, if you put them angled.
You could lose maybe-
One?
Two, maybe, and, but you could pick it up at the end, closer to-
If you did that, Tony, then you might wanna have a, a one-way in, one-way out, so you're going, obviously.
You have face in the direction.
Yeah, right.
That'd be one way.
That you're traveling to pull in.
Which, which, there's nothing wrong with that.
I think you bring up a good point, I think we should keep the one-way in, one-way out regardless, 'cause while it looks like there's a lot of space on this plan, there really isn't.
Yeah, it might not be.
Yeah. Yeah.
There is still a walkway up the center, if you can see the way the parking stripes were left.
Yep.
Back, there's a six-foot walkway between the cars there, and then one to the north, too, where the handicap parking is, so that accesses up a walkway, not up the aisle of travel.
So, we'll vote on the contract to get started, because this is striping issues, right? It's not, aside from...
Yeah, but it won't change the limits.
So, in other words?
Do they stripe, or are we strapping?
They stripe.
It's part of the contract. But they're not gonna be doing it between now and April 2nd, maybe get started, maybe...
No, I think mid-May is completion date, Brian.
Yeah, there's all the asphalt plants opening up and everything. Maybe, maybe can you take a look at maybe the design?
Sure.
At an angle and see how many spots you lose?
We went through a few iterations to get here. Typically, that's how it works, you get to an end and you end up with lost space and you do it again.
And I will, I will say, the idea of a one-way makes sense, because there are kids in the parking lot, you're gonna be kids cutting around, going in different directions, at least you know if they're going one direction, it's a little more beneficial, that's all.
And I have one last question. Is the proposed walkway between, down the center, that raised, or is that just lined?
Striped.
Okay.
Yep. Just to keep, if they use it, from walking up the aisle.
Yep, no, it's great, it's good.
Alright, so... We can approve the contract, but can you bring us designs back at some later meeting?
Sure, yeah, some concepts of different layouts of striping, sure.
Before you get there.
Alright, motion?
Move that the Board of Select award the contract for improvements to the Egypt Beach Parking Lot in North Fork, Mass. for $265,000.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Kerman, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thanks, Sean.
Next one is a vote, discussion vote, award contract for RFS Corp. for Phase 3C Water Main Replacement.
So, on the prior one, we'll come up with three different proposals and bring it back before the board for the striping?
Yeah, you know, nothing, you know, you don't have to get into the technical, but I mean, this is what you think the numbers would be, and if you did it at an angle, just kind of, that's it.
Okay, that's fair enough. We went out to bid for the last water project. That includes the replacement of the water line on Oceanside Drive, service transfers on Turner Road, Booth Hill Road, Gannett Road, and what we want to do is the add alternate, which replaces the pipe on Manlot Road instead of doing transfer services over. Total cost for that project is $2,031,243.64.
Say that again, $2,031,243.64.
2-0-3-1, 2-4-3, .64.
So, what does the 2-4 and change mean? Is that, I'm looking at something different, the low bidder? RFS total of 2.4?
RFS is still a low bidder, that includes the add alternate for Manlot Road.
Okay.
And like we spoke about, we did include in this project for all the services, if we did flow filling the trenches, like we talked about, Sean, that'd be an extra $425,000. It's a little tight budget-wise.
Alright, if we don't do that, we're gonna require that they put in processed material, or no? They can just dig it up and put the material back in as they go?
We'll require, we'll require if all the specs, which is a processed material. On some of it, I believe, process for everything, there's nothing that goes in.
Especially if it's wet.
Right, if they come across lodge, boulders, they...
Boulders, they take them out, and obviously, they're not going to begin.
Are you familiar with that company? I don't know what that stands for, RFS. They are the low bidder, is that who you're recommending?
They are the low bidder, they were recommended by Weston and Sampson, they've done other projects this size. They also did some of the work on Hadley Road, under a different company, the two brothers own the company and they split up. I think it was Secoan Brothers prior, and they had done the work around Cedar Point, and they had done some work on Hadley Road doing the water lines.
Alright.
They're, you know, I don't want to say it, they're not our first choice, but they are the low bidder, and I don't really have a reason to disqualify them. We have had some better water contractors than them, but, you know.
They might be behind you, so be careful what you say.
I know, I know. But that's, that's where we are. We looked, we looked at them pretty closely, and we asked the engineer to go through them and see where it goes, but, you know, they came in with a very aggressive, you know, a very good price. And as I said, we didn't have grounds.
Nope, fine.
Karen?
Just to remind me, does this contract also include the final pavement, repavement of the road, or is that separate? How do we make it, how do we put it back together?
Excellent, excellent point. So, this particular project, we're gonna patch all the...
Cuts.
We're gonna patch everything up. Oceanside Drive, we're gonna, we're not gonna have the water contractor do the paving on that, what we're probably gonna have to do is let that settle for a year, and then we're gonna pulverize the entire road and build a whole new road afterwards, and we'll do that probably with T.L. Edwards. I don't want to have the water contractor doing all the pulverization and everything else.
It'll be a year where it's just bumpy, basically. Okay.
Slows traffic down.
Just remember, when we're done paving, everybody's gonna be saying we're going too fast.
It's going too fast, I know, just to let people know, you know, what to expect once the road's patched, but it's not gonna just sit there and not be finished.
We don't want the same thing happening, we, you know, jumped the gun with the contractor, we allowed him to pave on 123, which we held him responsible for it, they went back out and did all that patchwork and repairs, and they're still probably gonna be doing some more work out there.
Mm-hmm.
But it's...
So, that paving expense isn't in this number?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tony?
No.
Motion?
Move that the Board of Select award the contract for Phase 3C of the Water Main Rehab Project to RFS Corp. of Norfolk, Mass. for...
Cuts, cut the number.
$43, you said?
I think I did, $243.
$3.64, did I say that right? Motion by Mr. Harris?
Oh.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Excellent. The next project?
Hang on, I thought we have intermission. Anne, do you have some piano music you want to play for us?
No, but I...
Oh, that's okay.
I'll have a fellow to play, and he will be here in 15 minutes.
Okay, I just thought maybe you had some music you wanted to play for us.
Yeah, that's the news.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we're gonna have a discussion vote to award the contract to the Truck Store, Inc., to purchase a roll-off truck for the transfer station amounting for $60,000. This is that truck that we've been looking for, right?
Yeah, we've been looking for, probably over two years, to get a decent truck for the transfer station. So, what this will allow us to do is move the roll-offs better, as opposed to dragging them out with the loader. It also could allow us to do some hauling with the glass, we could haul them right from the containers. We went out to bid for a truck for this, we have $65,000, we get three bids back, one for $168.5, one for $175.211, and the other bid was for $60,000 for 2001 with low miles on it.
Could you go back and ask if they maybe bid $64,999 for Tony?
For which?
For Tony?
There'll be some...
$64,999 for Tony Vignani, who likes the, you know, stack.
Well, $60,000, we have $5,000 to spare, we'll put new tires on it with that money, or we'll, any repairs. The truck's in good shape, our mechanics have gone through it and feel comfortable with it. They came up with about four different concerns about it, one being a backup alarm and some other things, and they're gonna fix it and go through the truck. So, it's been long needed up there.
And it's only used on the site, right? It's not really going, it's off-road.
Well, no, this truck, we'll be able to use it on, like, for example, sometimes the Heritage Days, we'd bring a box down for handling the trash, we'd be able to do something like that. And we're hoping, if we're disposing a glass, we might be able to take it with that truck. Truck should be plenty roadworthy and everything else, it looks pretty staunch for a MAC. The truck it's replacing had 595,000 miles.
Sean?
How many?
How many?
595,000.
How many does this one have?
Fifty, 55.
55,000 miles?
Sixty. 60,000 miles, so.
Three thousand a year?
Well, I know, I talked to your mechanic and asked him about it today, as a matter of fact, and he thought it was, it was fine. I hadn't seen it, just a couple of pitches, I am, you know, it's a used truck, the others are quoted with new, so it's hard to compare one used one with another one, so, but no, it should be fine.
Twenty years old?
Yeah, I mean, where to, did he give you any history where it came from? Was it another municipality that's the only reason why, or an airport?
New York was all I got.
Or a new...
Uh-oh.
A new odometer, right?
It's new.
You know, if it's actual miles, miles and not. But these trucks can go half a million to a million miles, they can, not, you know, so, they do run a long time.
We looked at a few in New Hampshire. Some were delivered that we didn't know whether to throw them into the trash while they were there, or...
Right.
Call them up and tell them to come pick it up, or even call the mechanics.
Yeah, I brought the mechanics up to New Hampshire to look at three, two or three different trucks, and they went through with a fine tooth comb, one had a cracked frame, another one had a bad axle, so they went through this truck, you know, both mechanics on their hands and knees underneath it, and they felt good about it.
We had it for a couple of weeks, too, they left it for us.
Good, good, this should last us for a long time.
Alright, motion?
Move that the Board of Select award the contract for the purchase of 2001 MAC roll-off truck to the Truck Store in Rainham, Mass. for $60,000.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous, okay. Let's move on to the discussion vote, award contract to Tri Sales to purchase water meters for the water meter replacement program. Kevin?
So, we went out to bid, it's that time, for the water meters, again, every three years. We've got a very specific water meter that we use, so it's compatible with our system. Tri Sales is the supplier, and there is a breakdown, on the second page is the breakdown of where the quantities typically are, and the values for where they're going. We did have a couple other companies look, try to have a match that they could meet with, but they didn't bid.
How many meters are these going to?
Well, you know, for, we have for the 5/8s, 550, it's 3/4, 15, 1-inch, 15, inch and a half, 2, it just varies where they are, and sometimes it depends how many people need their meters replaced, what they actually get.
Are these the ones that are from the, I'm sorry, are these the ones from the outside that they're able to go through? Because we've replaced, have we replaced everybody's, where we don't have to have...
We've not replaced everybody's yet.
The wireless ones?
These are the wireless ones, are they right?
The wireless ones, yes.
How far, much farther do we need to go to have them complete wireless, if you know?
I'd have to check with Sean to give you a real answer, I want to say we're 30 to 40 percent.
Oh, really?
I could be way off on that.
Could you just last night, be curious, I'd like to know how long, how far along we are, that'd be great.
And are these, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else, are these compatible to the ones we have now?
Yes.
So, it's not like he has to carry two different?
No, that's, that's why the bid is set up that way, so that we don't have to get new equipment to read the meters.
Good, alright.
And I could be totally guessing, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember how far we are, Tony, along with that.
We started at, what, five, six years ago?
Yeah. A lot of what he's been doing, we had a lot of freeze-ups this winter, and he's been replacing, you know, people come in to replace their meters after they freeze up, or they have leaks, or, and he switches them out with these.
Alright, motion?
Move that the Board of Select award the contract to provide water meters with absolute encoders and integrated radio to Ty Sales Incorporated of Sudbury, Mass. with the unit price provided.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous then. Kevin, Sean, thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Yeah, if you could, like, maybe the next meeting, if that's sufficient, if not, the following one, just a follow-up on, just that info, that'd be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Will do.
Alright, let's get to our discussion presentation of the Annual Town Meeting Article 23, zoning bylaw amendments of the Green Bush Driftway Zoning Amendments. Brad? No, I'm gonna go with Brad. Brad, you're up here.
Waiting for my colleague, who I think just stepped up.
Get the benefit, all the other people have been waiting.
Nancy's ball, it's time for Nancy's ball.
Oh, no, I came before I came. I'm good.
Yep.
Got it, alright.
Brad, good evening.
How are you?
We're good.
So, I have Ted Bovitz with me tonight, the consultant that has been working with the EDC for a number of years, and actually was, worked on the vision plan right up through at the draft zoning, so actually Ted is going to run through a number of slides tonight, and then we can both...
Not too many.
Not too many.
Can anybody see that? Can you get that on TV, or is it, John, I should turn one of the lights off? How about Ruth, could I ask you to hit one of the lights? I guess what?
All or nothing.
All or nothing, I guess. Is that okay? Can everybody see it? Alright, do you mind, Brad?
That's fine.
Is that alright?
That's fine, yeah.
Good.
So, we'll go through these slides and then answer any questions that folks have.
So, good evening, again, my name is Ted Bovitz, I've been working with the EDC for a few years now, and back in 2016, we're coming off the adoption of the, not adoption, but basically the completion of the townwide economic development plan, and the EDC wanted to follow up and start looking at our villages and where the opportunities were in terms of, you know, business development, opportunities for housing, things that basically would sort of fill out these spaces and, you know, come up with an overall future plan for how these, how these spaces might grow over time. So, the first one we took was North Situate, and we followed it up with the Green Bush area, and we had a series of public workshops, visioning sessions, and gathered information from the community in terms of what, what they thought was appropriate for that area for the next 20 or 30 years, and put together an overall concept plan. So, our vision plan, so basically, we broke it up into different areas, so for example, the historic Green Bush Village, which is off-country way, obviously, you know, that area is sort of envisioned as being sort of a small village center, you know, maintaining its historic characteristics, sort of small incremental mixed-use growth over time, you know, things that are happening there today, small commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings and trades-type buildings, so more of that sort of stuff happening, you know, in the future, and the area along the drift, for the first segment between the Waverly and say Duncan Darnets, they saw as more sort of, you know, small-scale commercial mixed-use, and then when you get to the train station area, they saw that as an opportunity for what we call transit-oriented development. So, that, again, would be mixed-use with things such as restaurants and shops, and above that would be condominiums and apartments and that sort of stuff, integrated into sort of a nice walkable district, so that there's sort of, creating sort of a new village center in addition to what we have across the way with the historic Green Bush Historic Center. Moving further down the driftway, actually on the south side of it, where Riverwalk is and James Landing, that's basically, you know, those are pretty well-established neighborhoods at this point, so nothing much happening down there, except there's a couple of small parcels that could be, you know, infill parcels with similar types of townhouse units, small cottages, that sort of stuff, but primarily residential. And then moving further down, we got Widows Walk on the north side of the driftway, and what's envisioned there is pretty much, you know, what's there today, except for the possibility of maybe some function space, so make a small boutique hotel, something that sort of complements what's there in terms of the golf and other amenities, public amenities. And then the south side is the conservation park, and that's envisioned just to provide more opportunities for sort of passive recreation, maybe some gathering spots there, upgrade with the restroom facilities and picnic area and that sort of thing. So, I think a pretty well-thought-out plan, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and we've vetted it with the public, trying to get as much feedback as possible, so the real challenge at this point is trying to come up with a series of developing regulations, zoning standards, that meets this vision. And that's a big challenge, because what we have out there today looks like this. It's very complicated, it's, there's four base districts, there's five overlay districts, most of the parcels have at least two or three of both of those on-site. Most of the current zoning districts do not follow parcel boundaries, so a lot of split lots between one district and the other, so it's a very complicated situation. So, what we tried to do is, you know, based on the framework of our vision plan, outline these different districts, the village center, the transit-oriented village, the neighborhood, the North River Residential District, and then show underneath what's currently there for base districts, so that pink area that follows the driftway, that's the commercial district. So, you can see that it's splitting, basically on the north side, it goes up 1,000 feet off the driftway, so it's really bisecting things like the Situate concrete pipe, the transfer station, even, it's bisecting the Widows Walk Golf Course. It's even on the south side of the driftway and covers most of the conservation park, as well as the wastewater treatment plant. So, the contenting doesn't really make sense, it's not really what you want to see there in the future, you know, it's covering, you know, the entire area that's, where you've got James Landing and River, and Riverwalk, Riverway, so basically, it doesn't really fit, not only the vision, but what's there today, what's really, you know, integrated into that, into that area today. Looking at the overlay districts, the hashed area to the left side of the drive, you know, that's the village business overlay district, that's basically for the purpose of allowing residential and mixed-use development, and that's where the people are using it for. And then we've got the, what's called the planned development district, which is sort of a 1980-style sort of cluster development by law, that's looking for larger residential projects. And that's covering the, most of the golf course, and it also covers the James Landing and Riverway. So, it's a complicated system, and it doesn't fit the vision very well, so basically, what we're doing is starting from scratch and coming up with, you know, these new districts that really, you know, specify the types of uses that are not only appropriate, but are well-established in these districts and are part of the vision for the future. So, that's where we came up with these seven districts, and that's where we are today. So, as we mentioned, the village center along the country way, the gateway business district from the Waverly over to Duncan Darnets, the Transit Village around the train station, the transfer station and the concrete pipe factory becomes part of the business park. That's the long-term view of what might ultimately happen, and obviously, you know, relooking at a transfer station is not an easy thing, but, you know, the Economic Development Commission's job is to just look forward to where our economic opportunities really are, and that certainly is one of them, being, you know, right on the driftway, right off of 3A and next to the MBTA station. The North River Residential is covering the North River Residential, basically what we have well-established neighborhoods. And the Conservation District on the north side of the driftway is the park, is the golf course, and the south side is the, is the conservation park, North River. So, the purpose of those, we've talked about this a little bit already, but is to facilitate the investment, take advantage of the few economic development opportunities we really have in Situate, you know, as you know, most of 3A quarter is not zoned for commercial, so really, the best opportunity we have is right here in the Green Bush area. But if we're going to have economic developments and new growth, you know, make sure that it's designed well, designed properly, it fits in and contributes to the amenities and the buildings that are there today. We need to support that new development with good quality streetscapes, so that it's not only, you know, an attractive place for people to drive along, but also attractive place for people to live, easier for people to get around, whether they're on foot or by bike. These are all important things for creating a village, multi-modal transportation opportunities, you know, obviously, having a train station there, having that, running the buses is a good, a good benefit for people that, that have access to vehicles. Increasing housing choices, it's really one of the best places in town, you know, because of the train station, because you're equipped bike, bike ride away from the harbor, for people that want those types of amenities, want the easy travel and having, you know, golf course next door, having, having the burger next door as well. And, you know, trying to create a broad range of development opportu, business opportunities, whether it's corporate offices that might go in the new business park, or small-scale mom-and-pop pizza places and restaurants and shops, that sort of thing. So, it's a very sort of, covering a lot, a broad range of housing and business opportunities, where we really don't have those opportunities in other places at this point. So, I'm not going to go through in detail all the different districts, but basically, they're all, you know, the seven different districts have very specific standards based on what the overall goal is for those areas. But the common denominator is that there's a sort of a template used for building placement, for density, for appropriate open spaces. So, things like, in the current standards, you might have a requirement for 20% open space, but there's no quality standard attached to that. So, it could be sort of a fringe area behind the dumpster that completes your open space, or it could be the landscaped islands in the parking lot. So, what we're calling here is actual open space, things that are usable, whether it's an outdoor dining terrace if you're a restaurant, or a pocket park if you're a residential project. You know, good design standards. We actually already have good design standards, but they're sort of broken up in different pieces. There's some good ones in the village business overlay district, but there's some other good ones in a different part of the zoning bylaws. So, we've sort of merged all that together into one overall series of design standards that fits the vision of this plan. Good flexible parking standards, you know, understanding that, you know, in these village centers there's opportunities for shared parking, there's opportunities to use public parking, and we need to be able to, you know, make sure that we're flexible in terms of providing parking in different ways. And other things like signage and different ways to sort of, you know, address pedestrian needs and interests, you know, in terms of activating buildings and making it a vibrant neighborhood and vibrant center. So, the very business district that you see what's there today, you know, the large office buildings and right down to Duncan Donuts, and it's really sort of more of that that we anticipate seeing along that first part of the driftway. Although, you know, streetscape is a real critical area in that area. There's really not good sidewalks. We want to extend the bike path, maybe to around about and beyond, up 123. So, that's really a combination of, you know, small-scale residential, commercial growth, but also, you know, trying to get some funding, hopefully maybe through Mass Works for some streetscape improvements.
So, did you include the property across, the medical building across the street there?
Yes.
Did we just change that?
But not any of the stuff behind it? Is that the only?
Well, it does include the stuff behind it. Includes the river shed and those CPs and that area right there.
So, that's that little?
That's all part of the Gateway District, yeah. Yeah.
See the building? See that little pink?
Yeah, you can see the, I got them.
That's the river shed.
River shed is...
Yeah, I was...
This is the medical building that's still available, I believe. That's the river shed right there, CPs. That's Duncan Donuts right there. That's the Hatch Building. Goes back to the mall behind that, yeah. Yeah.
And is there any restrictions in that area?
What do you mean restrictions?
Like, business?
Well, it's a mixed-use district, so you can do commercial and some level residential. You can't just single-family home, obviously, but you can do townhouses, that sort of thing. And there's some good spots for that, too. You're looking out over the river there, the Brook, sort of the southern area along that, the old right-of-way that's been turned into sort of a pathway out to Harrenbrook. So, there's some opportunities there to do sort of a mix of commercial and residential. But that allows, you know, it's a pretty limited area. You know, the Hatch property, you know, that's sort of surrounded by wetlands. Not much more can be done with that. There's a parking lot on the south side of the mall there, the plaza there, that, you know, could have some opportunity. So, what's allowed there under the new buildings is townhouses, row houses, multifamily buildings, live-work buildings, which is basically sort of a, you know, a two-story building with commercial down below and then, you know, owner-occupied residential up above, general commercial buildings, gas backwards. Now, this is interesting, because this has gotten a lot of play with some of the public hearings. Basically, in the commercial district, the underlying commercial district, gas stations are permitted. I think it's the only place in town where gas stations are permitted. But what we're saying is, we're not going to take that opportunity away, but what we want developers to do, if they're going to do a gas station convenience store, is to flip the site plan so that the convenience store is up front along the sidewalk, so it sort of builds that sort of village center feel. And then the gas pumps and the canopies are behind that.
How's that work?
How's it work?
Yeah.
You basically take that site plan, Site Plan A from Cumberland Farms or anybody else, and you turn it upside down.
I know that. Do they sell a lot of gas that way?
They do, yeah.
Yeah, there's a picture of one later.
There's lots of, I get lots of examples of that, yeah.
So, we can, we'll go through the rest of the districts quickly, but I just, I think it's important to note that, you know, the kind of list or the menu of proposed uses here as it relates to the existing zoning, and it matches up very closely with what you are permitted to do now. This, I wouldn't say this is just a housekeeping exercise. It's more kind of bringing it all together in a more kind of cohesive fashion. Again, kind of bringing out some of the good elements of the existing zoning as it relates to design guidelines and other items. But I think kind of strengthening things that we don't have now, like low-impact design, at least in terms of the specificity that we're proposing, and some other items. So, these are not kind of new uses that we're proposing for the area. It's, again, just kind of reiterating, as we go through these slides, again, you see what's there now and then what example these potential results. So, it's a very similar kind of style of development, yeah.
So, country, the Green Bush Village Center, talked about that. Basically, you know, again, it's a mix of small to medium-sized residential, commercial, mixed-use buildings, very similar to what's sort of happening over time there today. So, it's just...
Change that to residential.
That's that?
He's just joking. Change it to residential.
The Transit Village, that's basically, you know, around the train station on the new driftway, mixed-use. You can see that, you know, that's where the Drew Project is being proposed. Looking at doing some streetscape improvements and some open space improvements along the new driftway, giving the, you know, the opportunity to make better connections between new driftway and driftway in terms of sort of forming that area as a village center, and sort of curving in the commercial side of things and eliminating it from the established neighborhoods with Riverway and with James Landing. Again, it's sort of an example of what types of developments you might see there over time. This is the business park, which, again, it's the Situate pipe as well as the transfer station. You know, opportunities, obviously, with Situate pipe, if something were to change with that property. But also, you know, over time, it could be an opportunity with the transfer station, if an adequate alternative location were found, because of its proximity to 3A and because of its proximity to the train station, you know, that would be a great, you know, place for a business park for all sorts of different things, from maker spaces and tradesmen to corporate office buildings. So, it's a great opportunity, over the long term.
Is it a Walmart dump in that parcel?
Yeah, but that's pretty well-covered by the sort of array, right?
Right.
I mean, you could relocate those, but that's not an easy thing to do.
Right. I just wondered spatially where it was.
Yeah.
What about consideration, and maybe, Brad, Stockbridge Road, where the dotted red lines are kind of going up around in the arc, consideration of including those into the business district? I had mentioned that because at the very top, there's that long rectangular next to the train track, and that's business.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I hear you. We included the south side of it, but...
The south side, yeah, and then the northern side.
Yeah. I mean, and actually, our commercial use is on the north side. You know, there's some home-based businesses and there's some other properties. It's a good question, and, you know, we didn't want to reach too far. We really didn't want to sort of, you know, encroach on places that are, you know, where we've...
Pumps, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Might be consideration in the future, obviously, because I see you're including Stockbridge coming off the bridge.
That's right.
Which wasn't before.
Right, right. Yeah. But what we did for now is that red line is basically the indication that's a transition buffer. So, understanding that there are a series of residences on the other side of Stockbridge up in there, there's an additional buffer requirement for new development on the south side, so that we don't, you know, encroach on them too much. But over time, yeah, I mean, if the neighborhood's amenable to becoming part of another district, that's a possibility. Diving from, you know, commercial, small-scale, large-scale commercial buildings and corporate buildings, maybe some mixed-use along the driftway. The neighborhood is a neighborhood. There's really not much opportunity down there. There's a couple of small pieces. They're currently zoned commercial, but are got clear views of the river, just like James Landing does in Riverway. And so, we thought that those small parcels, which you can see, you know, this is a small parcel, this is a small parcel here, should be sort of complementary residential with the views that they have out the back towards the, towards the river in the drift.
The project mix, there was a retail...
This is also the trail that leads out to Harrenbrook right here. Those are, it ties it all together.
Brad, just, you know, the traffic light where they all sell chariot pots, and that new development. I remember the developers, there were some young guys, they came in. It's not, it's not...
River.
Yeah, yeah. There was a, there was a component of that that showed some retail space out front.
Yeah, that Frank Colpoys development there. They were supposed to put a building...
Yeah. Yeah, that is right. Where is it?
It's all residential now, it's set back.
Yeah, but this piece up here is a separate piece, and that's supposed to be 2,500 square foot.
Business.
Business downstairs and two apartments upstairs. It hasn't been built yet, sorry.
Yeah.
The parking lot's behind it.
So, the ball's in their court that could be done?
Ball's in their court.
Okay.
Comply with a special permit to construct that building.
Okay.
How long's that been out there?
A few, yeah, it went over years.
Oh, really?
For a while. It's got to be 12, because it was before I got on the board.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of setup for a mixed-use building to go up front there, and that fits right into this plan right here, so, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, not much happening in that area. It's pretty well-built out, but, you know, small-scale, cottages would fit in nicely there, some nicely-designed townhouses, that sort of thing, but feeling more smaller infill parcels.
Can I ask a question? Brad, why do you incorporate the Design Review Committee with the Planning Board? I don't have a clear sense as to where they are in the process and how informed they are. Like, who's managing, so I love that look of the small little townhouses.
Yeah.
Who's managing that part of it?
So, I mean, just tonight, you know, the Design Review Committee is meeting tonight on the Drew Project. They're advisory to the Planning Board. And either the Board will request it and/or staff can recommend it in advance that the Design Review Committee be pulled in on a project. Again, they'll meet several times concurrent, typically with the Planning Board, and then send their memo or findings to the Planning Board so it can get incorporated into the Board's process, you know, whether it's a special permit or subdivision review. So, and again, I haven't seen it yet, but again, beyond the memo, they can come in and also do kind of a joint meeting. And please chime in if I run us afoul here. But again, I think, you know, so they're incorporated into the Planning Board process, but advisory to them. Again, we have design standards in place. The proposed bylaw would be a little bit more, I think, that's a good adjective.
I think the bylaw, excuse me, gender of my opinion, Chris Rowe, the bylaw would be more codified and give Design Review more direction. The Planning Board appoints members to the Design Review.
That's my question.
And according to our bylaws, they are ancillary, they advise us, they also advise the zoning board appeals in terms of whether they're up to...
Are they utilized?
They should be.
So, if you remember the place on First Parish, across from, next to the taxpayer, tax collector, that vacant lot, that, I guess you could say condominium complex.
979. Yeah, I know, yeah.
They were, that went through the Design Review.
Okay. Thanks. I just, I don't, sorry. Okay, thank you.
So, Widows Walk, you know, I mentioned before, there may be a possibility of a small boutique hotel with some function space, but primarily, you know, what it is today, you know, recreation, public recreation. And so...
Restrictions on that?
Are there restrictions on what?
That property?
Uh, you couldn't do a hotel there now. Basically, what's there is there, so. It does actually fall in the commercial district, so, I mean, I suppose if, you know, by town meeting, maybe, you know, you could put something out there.
But you're proposing that it's, it adds a commercial aspect to it?
No, it's commercially zoned now.
It's commercially, yeah. It's commercially zoned now.
Yeah. And what is, what's the change going to be?
Well, the change is, we're not, we're not, we're not allowing commercial development. We're doing a very small amount of commercial development, limited only to clubhouse, restaurants, and maybe boutique hotels.
Something that would complement the golf course use.
Whereas technically now, I mean, you could do, on the front part of that property, you could do gas stations and strip malls and that sort of thing.
Right. So, imagine, I like using the word industrial. It's an industrial zone, which, we're basically down-zoning then, the industrial zones.
Well, it's commercial along the driftway. So, in most cases, we're actually changing it to, you got commercial and you got part of it is under village business overlay districts. We're basically turning them into mixed-use districts at different scales. Out here, this far out in the driftway, we're going back towards focusing on recreation and conservation with a small exception for Widows Walk. And that's what this is right here. The other side of the street, Conservation Park, we're not allowing any commercial development.
Say that again?
On the other side of the street...
Once you get down there, that's all...
Down here, yeah, sorry, here.
Nope.
That is actually zoned commercial. That whole, big chunk of that Conservation Park is zoned commercial, as well as Go Green and Wasteway Treatment Plant. So, obviously, that's a conservation park, and we want to maintain that, and we don't have any commercial interest in it. So, well, we do have interest in trying to get more people out there to enjoy it.
Yeah.
And where's that piece of land that they looked to develop years ago, between the transfer station?
It's right there.
The triangle.
Is that in the green?
Pointing right to it, right there.
Now, that's... Yeah. And that's a wedge of land that...
This is a clubhouse right here.
...have commercial... So, it's actually, it's actually transcending both the business, the gray, which is your business...
This is a, this is a business park.
Yeah, but if you put it right down between, right there, that's the land that we're looking for the OCC that unfortunately never came to fruition. So, that little shape in there, is that the golf course? Is that the edge of the parking lot? That's...
This is the parking lot out here. This is a clubhouse right here.
Oh, yeah. So, there's not, most of it's in...
Yeah.
And that's probably the first T.
Yeah, this is, and that's the first T. This is the driving range over here, and the pond is up there, too.
Yeah, so there's really not much. Most of that land is probably in the gray.
That's right, yeah. Yeah. And it rises, you know, goes up that bank real quickly, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously, if you'd like to upgrade the porta-potties to some actual bathrooms, it'd be nice. I mean, that's the view from the driftway, and it's just a great place to go fishing or put the boat in, and could be a lot better. So, our vision is, you know, good fishing, good boating, but also, you know, maybe some yoga sessions and, you know, and music and that sort of stuff. Programming, it's really programming. So, I mean, there's been a lot of questions about this and that, you know, so frequently asked questions. We're allowing more density. No, we're basically trying to keep, you know, with what's in the underlying zoning districts, we're just sorting things out in terms of the types of buildings and the types of uses and making sure that we have good design standards with it. But the density more or less stays the same. Are we proposing an actual development? A lot of people, because we've done a sort of a vision plan, a conceptual plan, think that we're proposing, you know, given developments. And no, we're just trying to show people generally, you know, what could happen, type of development, the sort of the pattern of development over a long period of time. And, you know, realistically, that vision plan is 50 years or more of development. So, you're not going to see anything like that happen overnight. So, just to give people sort of an idea. Are we preparing to remove all existing zoning? No, we're removing the base districts, but we're keeping, obviously, the overlay districts that matter, you know, the flood plain, the water protection, resource protection overlay district, and the...
Salt marsh.
Salt marsh, yeah. Yeah. So, basically, the environmental district's obviously going to stay, and would take jurisdiction over any kind of proposal under the base district, so...
Just like they do now.
Just like they do now, right. Right. Are we proposing zoning changes that are anti-business? Absolutely not. I mean, we're basically giving more opportunities for business development. We're just requiring with that, you know, good design, and things are sort of going to, you know, build up, you know, this village and neighborhood center over time. So, you have questions, ask Brad. Invite to, or call him if you'd like.
Write me a letter.
So, do you, questions?
Could I ask you to turn that off? Questions from the board.
I'm curious, the feedback, I know you did a lot of public sessions, so how, what was the feedback that you received from the, uh, the residents and the business owners in the area?
Yeah, so we, just to talk about that for a second, we did do, we did do a lot of public sessions. We had stakeholder meetings in Green Bush targeted to just kind of Green Bush residents and businesses. We've done public sessions, we've done meetings at the planning board, EDC, we're on the board tonight. Um, I think folks had a lot of questions about what is this, because it, again, on the face of it, it looks a little different. So we've had to kind of explain to folks that it's not dramatically different. It's kind of a repackaging, it's really kind of getting a look and feel of the district as opposed to kind of a wholesale change in what you're allowed to do there. Um, so I think that's, it's mostly been more questioning. You know, we have had, in terms of, um, local developers, local landowners, local business owners, there has been a fair deal of support for this as well. So again, we've just really tried to go out there as many times as we can to answer these questions. You know, we've also had meetings with local neighborhood groups or local neighborhood areas that had concerns about this, so we've really tried to answer as many of those questions as we could.
Um, yeah, I mean, there were a lot of changes, but I, I think it's organizing it a heck of a lot better and really getting it, getting the components where they should be. I think, I think it's a great plan. Uh, my one question is, are you displacing anybody now that's in some sort of use of property? You know, for instance, you know, the, I mentioned the medical building, so they're gonna be zoned in a, in a industrial area and Go Green there kind of over by that, um, you know, conservation area. Are they still, is anyone gonna have to change their, are gonna have a negative impact on the other operations?
Not that we found out, even like the new, new proposal, the Drew proposal, that fits into the current, the proposed zoning as well. So the, the medical building, that's in a commercial district and that's an allowed use under this new zoning, so, you know, we haven't gone lot by lot by lot, but I think that by and large, we're, you know, we, we basically are basing this, this new zoning on what's there today, the mix of buildings that are there today and trying to sort of push the, the better ones forwards, so.
Yeah, I just, I think you have to make sure that no one that's using the, the land for some purpose now is gonna be negatively impacted by what these changes are. That's, that's really my only concern. I, I love the organization of it, it makes business sense, you know, logical sense, conservation sense, all of it flows very nicely. But that one component of it, I hate to come back and say, oh, we just rezoned your property and you can't.
Right. No, so, I mean, an example would be the, the village center, the Green Bush Village Center. You know, there's a lot of trades in there, you know, and there's been a few trade buildings built in the last few years. I mean, you know, we made, we, we saw that and it was something you typically would put into a, you know, an old village center, but we made sure that we, we accommodated, you know, different types of commercial buildings and sort of commercial industrial buildings on a small scale to, to make sure that we, you know, we'd let people, you know, work in their, in their village center.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is more to you, Brad. I mean, someone's gotta go by the property to make sure that we're not saying, hey, Jim, you know, this is conservation land, now you gotta, you gotta move. So as, as long as that's fine, I, I think it's where you're planning.
Yeah, the only two areas, I think, that could even, because again, I think in the kind of western side of the district, again, the, the menu of uses stays fairly broad and I think it translates almost exactly from proposed, uh, from existing to proposed. I think the area that maybe, like you mentioned, Go Green, we can look into that, but again, I think the uses kind of in those two conservation districts, we might have to double check to make sure there's.
Over there.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's sewer treatment plant.
Yep, we just wanna make sure that, I mean, the municipal uses are allowed anywhere as they are now, but we can check on the.
Yeah, we've added columns to the table here. We'll go through it again and just double check.
Yep, definitely.
I think we're on pretty solid ground.
Hold, hold on, I just wanted, did you have a question?
I don't wanna jump in front of Anne. She's just gonna.
And just keep in mind, last year, year before, we took the medical building that's right there at the Rotary, which had been a residential use, and we put that into the business district.
Yeah.
And we took, on the other side, some of the auto, that went from residential into the business district. So everyone's pretty much where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, I, I know that the, there was interest in a hotel, a small hotel there at that, on that medical center site. We made sure that we, we had hotel in that district so that possibility could happen.
To Anne's point, the road didn't always go in that direction. You had to go in front of the concrete pipe, so that's why it was residential. We changed that, like she said. Can you show me one slide that, just one?
Which one?
Show me, so, I don't know. I, I, I couldn't tell one from another. No, show me one slide with just the perimeter of what you're talking about.
The perimeter.
All right? You're just, there's so many, so I can't even see where the streets are.
Go back.
The total, all right, so it's the total area you're talking about and forgive me if this is a stupid question, but what you're really trying to do is trying to, you had all different things going on, you're just trying to make it similar. All within that area, correct? Maybe encourage mixed use to walk and ride, you know?
Yeah, so this is, this is the proposed in blue. Those are the proposed districts and then the, the pink and the yellow and the red are current districts. So this is the business district in red.
Mm-hmm.
This is the commercial district in pink and all the yellow is residential. So basically, what we're doing is, we're going a little bit into the residential on the north side.
Tell me where that is. I got some streets.
That's the Stockbridge Road.
All right.
So we're taking in that south side of Stockbridge, which is sort of a mix already of commercial, industrial, residential, uh, everything else, and making it part of this business district. Uh, that doesn't mean they have to do anything today. That just says that over time, that can become more of a, you know, a commercial or industrial district.
Right.
Now, this is the current business district, that becomes the village center, um, so not only, in the business district, you can't do residential, you can't do mixed use. You have to use the village business overlay district. So basically, we're merging those two together, taking the best elements of both and creating a true historic mixed-use district. So you can do that by right now, but the catch is that you've got design standards and you still have design standards under the current zoning, but, you know, you're allowed it by right, but you have integrated design standards that go with that. So that's taking the V-Bod and the business district and making that one mixed-use district at a small scale. Now, on a larger scale along the Driftway, there's more residential, commercial, mixed use, but it's more horizontal. So you will, you'll see sections where there might be some townhouses, sections where there might be commercial plazas, sections where there might be office space, not so much like the village center where you see shops below and, and residential above. Um, and then the neighborhood, we're basically protecting the neighborhood because you can see it's all zoned for commercial today, so theoretically, you could have a 7-Eleven right there. Don't think that works. I don't think the, maybe the road makes it in the room there because you could shed your boat up there and get a, get a couple of beers, but, um, no, so this becomes the neighborhood. That is, that is an established neighborhood and that's gonna stay a neighborhood now and it's, you know, there may be some small infill pieces here and there, but nothing, nothing significant.
Sean, I'll see if we can, prior to town meeting, I, I can't do it, but maybe you can do it. Um, let's get an aerial and overlay this so you can see the boundaries of what's there now in reality.
Yes, right, it is, right.
Yeah, there's, this has got the road.
An actual, like, aerial map with some landmarks.
I have it there, yes, I do. But I've got stuff on it, but.
Well, that's okay, Ted.
You sure?
Yep, only because we've got some more to go through, but, um.
You had a question?
Uh, just a, a couple things. I just want, so often people have said in, you know, because there's been development, that they're concerned that we, we're gonna wreck situat, that we're gonna, you know, that we're, things are out of control. To me, this thoughtful planning and design and, and outreach to the community before you came with this plan, um, is exactly what we need. It's proactively looking at what the vision of what we want our villages to look like and putting those standards in place. And I just wanna reiterate that, as you said, this doesn't mean it's gonna happen tomorrow. It may not happen while any of us are still here, but it gives us the, the opportunity before it gets ahead of us to define what we would like to see. Um, so I think that is terrific. And I just had one question and one suggestion on the presentation. Um, I assume there's no, there's, it's, it's all hypothetical, so looking at the impact of potential traffic would be incremental over time? That's something that, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
So projects would still be, traffic would be with the planning board or to pick a project through MIPA, so, yep.
Okay. Um, 'cause obviously, when you look at that and think, wow, what's gonna happen if all that happens?
Yeah.
We'll do it incrementally.
Yep.
Um, the other, what I would suggest when you do the, you have the slide where you have both the proposed and the current?
Yeah.
If there's a way to, in the presentation, do the proposed and then add the lines for the, so they're not at the same time?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Because it took me a while to sort of, like, see that and if you could overlay it, I think it would just visually be easier for people.
Yeah, I think you, yeah, suggest for a visual to make it easier for people to understand because, you know, I see this stuff every day, so it's sort of second nature.
I think if you could do it just one and then over.
I had some cheesy animation on mine that actually tried to do that, but we can have a real PowerPoint where.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay. Um, no, it's a lot of work and I, I, um.
Yeah, I think that the economic development just did the right thing. I think, you know, in the town for that matter, they basically said, well, what, you know, we lost the growth in certain areas in our, in our villages, we wanna focus our growth, but let's take a step back and let's figure out what the long-term vision is and we'll draw it up and we'll use that as sort of the foundation for making some new zoning standards that go with it, so.
Sounds very.
So way to do it, rather than, a lot of towns, they just arbitrarily say, well, that's a commercial, no, that's a, that's a, it's a state highway, let's make it commercial without putting any thought into it, so.
No, I'm all set. Thanks, Sean.
I'm good, no, it looks great.
Yes.
Gentlemen up.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, Ken Duval, El Block. I had a question. You were talking about the neighborhood district and residential development would be on a small scale and over near the railroad station would be large scale? What do you mean small scale, large scale?
Well, uh, so this is, this is the, you know, this is the train station, the NBCA lots and that sort of thing, you know, the Drew projects out there are proposed. So that would be more of a large scale. That's a pretty big business, pretty big development proposal versus, you know, there's not much left down where you are. So there's a couple of, you know, this is a parcel where there's some stores, there's some vehicles, it's, uh, what's the name of it?
Sketch Mills?
No, no, it's, no, it's the.
About the truly.
It's actually Topman.
Topman, it's Topman's what it is. Topman's, that's a small parcel and then down here below, uh, some welding and so on like that. You know, that, that could be some small type of infill development that might look like this, you could like to see where you are, but, you know, small-scale townhouses. There's very much what's already there with Riverway and with James Land, so, but it just, we didn't want to see that, right now it's only commercial.
Right. But on the neighborhood district, you said small scale. I didn't know small scale, large scale because.
Yeah, small scale is townhouses, cottages, which are less than two-bed, two-bedroom, 1,400 square feet. That's, that's small scale versus what Drew is proposing with the large residential and mixed use buildings.
And is that outlined in the written text?
The text.
Is that outlined in the written text?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So is that changing where, where that Fitz built under agreement? And so are you gonna change the zoning there then by making it small scale?
No, so Ken, if you actually look at the proposed table of use, it has density of units per acre, so it's very similar to what you can do now in a village business overlay district, and we had discussed that previously. So if you compare the two next to each other, they're almost identical.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Um, Ted, thank you. Brad, thank you. I have to say, this is actually a much more, I hate saying simplistic, but it's a much more easier way of taking a look at the zone in the Green Bush area and, um, it's gonna be much more manageable going forward for people to understand what they have and what they can do. I think the, the carrot is, is being able to have some control over the vision, certainly with the green space of saying, yeah, we just don't want green space where the trees are in the middle of the parking lot. We want some meaningful.
Exactly.
Quality, um, contribution.
And it could be a range of different things, could be rooftop terraces.
I've seen it in other towns where I practice and I, I sit here and I go, wow, the parking lot and pervy, you know, surface with grass that they allegedly mow with crappy trees that end up, you know, dying, you know, that's not meaningful, so.
Right.
This is really important. I like the idea of the vision and, and that's the, that's the carrot you try to do with development, trying to encourage and, and, um, so I'm very supportive of it. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Other than that, I'm glad, we, that's the reason why we asked you to come, so we have a better understanding of the changes with the proposed modifications of the zoning laws, uh, bylaws, so, um, that's very helpful. Might need a little more succinct at town meeting because, but I think, you know, we look.
Well, I know, I tend to, you know.
So, I don't know, no, this is, it's really.
Throw it on.
Well, what you've done and what the EDC has done is, is exactly what I envisioned when Dan Morgan and I talked about creating it and, um, I have to say, I'm, I'm really pleased by it, so, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Um, all right, it's a little after nine, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess and then I'm gonna say, is, uh.
Ross here.
I was just gonna say, Mrs. Hine has Mr. Constantine here. Uh, we'll start with him and then we'll proceed with the 9:10. Uh, Mr. Duval, I think that's your, your proposal, so. At this point, 10 minutes and let's see if we can get back at 9:20. Is that good enough?
Uh, yeah.
Call this meeting back to order and, uh, we're gonna go back to, what was that, 7:50? A discussion vote, Jamie's Pub Sewer Agreement. I see Mr. Ralph Constantine is here. Good evening.
Paul Josh is in late, thank you.
Okay. So, um, where are we at then with this? Karen?
Uh, just as a little bit of background, hello, thank you for coming in today. Um, uh, Mr. Constantine has been, um, reaching out to the town for several months, um, about Um, Mr. Constantine has been reaching out to the town for several months about trying to rebuild in North Situate, the restaurant, which is quite a literal and a economic hole in the district, as we all know. And over the course of those conversations, it all comes back to the viability of a restaurant in North Situate without sewer, and the cost to the business to do that. And in, and the result of that is he has come, he's come before us to discuss a short-term proposal to help address that situation. Is that a fair assessment of what we were...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Would you like to lay it out, or how would you like to...
Well, I think as, you know, just a background, on the restaurant, it's been there fifty years, and my father had a failed system, when he passed away, and I inherited the business, and we were forced to either, obviously the town at that point said, you got to do something about it, so I addressed it, and I put in tight tanks because at the time it was going to cost a quarter of a million dollars to relocate to a remote leaching field, pipe it down Gannett Road and whatnot, so we, we opted for that with the town constantly talking about sewage and saying, well, within this many years, and that was ten years before it burned down, that, so it was meant to be, the tight tanks were meant to be a short-term solution until town sewage, and that was ten years. And so, at the time of the fire, we were spending eleven hundred dollars a week on septic removal, and it's an old building, we had virtually no mortgage on the property, so it was, it was viable at the time to, even though it really, you know, made it more of a break-even proposition, it still was, it was doable. But now, you know, the cost of, it's going to be almost double to replace that building than it was before with handicap requirements, new code requirements, just bringing it to the way it's, it needs to be now. So, the, the, I can't have the septic removal cost be more than what the, what the, you know, mortgage on the business is going to be, so. And the town doesn't owe me anything, but I, but in order to put a restaurant there, we need a temporary bridge to get us to town sewage if, if something is going to happen in the village, so that was my, you know, reason for bringing it to the town and asking if there's anything we can do until we get town sewage to the village, and, you know, Jim and Karen, I think, came up with something that seems fairly reasonable. It wasn't exactly what I was looking for, but I think in any negotiation, you know, it goes a little both ways, and, you know, I, I don't know if you guys are, have that in front of you and see what it is. I think that's something that, although not perfect, I could work with until, you know, such time as town sewage comes in, Jim was talking, I mean, at three and a half years.
Three to five, yeah, but that's...
Three to five, I'm, you know, optimistic, and I know there's several different proposals being talked about, and hopefully one to the, one of those will come to fruition. Just for the, for North Situate in general, because it will help my business beyond just my septic issue, it will help the redevelopment of the North Situate Village, and bring more business to the village in general.
Just to add to that a little bit, one of the concerns is that as a full-service restaurant, this is the only site in town that doesn't have its enough land for a septic field or isn't on town sewer, so that, Mr. Constantine's original proposal is, he wanted to pay what the other restaurants were paying that were able to be on the sewer, and not, and...
Yeah, but everybody else pays about one cent a gallon for septic, for sewage, it's, it's based on your water consumption rate, and while I propose that, Jim proposed two cents, which is a lot better than what I was proposing, because I still had to pay for disposal costs, which is going to be, I haven't even nailed that down, you know, three or four cents a gallon, for somebody to pump it, bring it down to the place and dump it in the, in the sewer. So it's still going to cost me five to six cents a gallon, but I was paying eleven cents, so that's certainly, it's going to cut the cost a half. But for instance, this two, this two would might pay for six hundred and fifty thousand gallons a year, we'd pay sixty-two hundred, sixty-five hundred dollars a year for septic, sewage disposal, I'll be paying thirty-two thousand five hundred for that same sewage removal. So it's not, you know, just a, a simple solution, but it's, at least it's better than paying sixty-five thousand.
Should we walk through the terms a little bit?
Sure. What are the terms that you, you've worked with on this?
So, as, Jim, do you want to walk through them, or you want me to?
You can do them.
Okay. So obviously, there was a lot of conversation, because this is a unique situation, and while we don't want to give preferential treatment to one business over another, this is an economic driver in the North Situate Village, and it's a finite, it's a finite project. Hopefully, we'll have sewer, and this will all be moot in three to five years. So, that we are thinking about was to do a discounted rate of two cents per gallon for the, based on the water usage, just like as if you were hooked up to the sewer system. Do a three-year agreement with an option for the board to renew for a year. Obviously, the building's not going to be ready for...
Perfect, yeah, the best case scenario is late summer's fall.
Right, so that the functional application of this agreement would be a year and a half or so, once you're up and running anyway, but it would give you that security. The town would monitor quarterly the water usage to make sure that there wasn't any shenanigans in what was coming out of the building and what was being dumped at the, at the plant, not that you would do that, sir, if somebody in the interim area did that, but we wanted to make sure that we were really only giving a dispensation, basically, for your business. That as soon as sewer is available in North Situate, this obviously would terminate, that this agreement wouldn't be transferable, this would be to your business for the, for the time that it's there, and that the sewage being disposed has to meet town requirements, because obviously, with a business restaurant, there's grease traps and all of that, and that would have to be part of the agreement. There is no agreement drafted, we wanted to bring this before the board to have a discussion about whether to go through the process of writing up an agreement, and whether it would go town, you know, see if you guys were amenable to this, or what the concerns were before we went to the next step of actually drafting that agreement. Did I leave anything out that you can think of?
I think that pretty much sums it up.
Joe?
You said non-transferable, from Ralph, or from, what do you mean by that? Disagreements with Ralph?
Yeah.
And stays with Ralph?
I would think that, I mean, that's one of those terms that we need, we definitely have to hash out.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to want to buy it with that kind of set, particular situation anyway, so, I don't think until town sewage is available, we're going to buy it as a sell-out, right, to somebody else, so.
And grease traps, that's going to be, that's part of the building codes.
We have an existing fifteen-hundred gallon grease trap that gets pumped quarterly that, you know, they don't, the, you know, Rosanna Davis wouldn't just, they can't just pump grease and dispose of it either, so they have to take care of the grease separately.
Those are the only two things that jumped out right away to me.
A couple of things, can you tell me how many gallons a week you were disposing when you were open?
It was between ten and eleven thousand, so it was between five and five hundred and fifty thousand gallons. I'm hoping with the new restaurant and some...
How many seats were in your restaurant?
It was about a hundred, we're actually reducing it a little bit because with handicap accessibility and stuff, it reduced the amount of seating we could fit in the available square footage, so we're going to be around, what, about ninety probably now. But I still anticipate using maybe a little bit more water because of the increased volume, especially for the first year or so, when it's new, you know, you have your honeymoon period, and I don't know how much that's going to be offset by high efficiency products that we buy compared to the old, old antiquated stuff that was there, so it's kind of a, could be the same, could be another hundred thousand gallons, I really don't know.
And what, I have one more question, sorry. What are your, I know, I know your plans are, you know, contingent on trying to work something out, and certainly want to help get you there. What does your timing look like with regards to where you are with your...
Well, once I have an agreement, I'm really going to go forward, trying to get the financing lined up to, to go ahead and go. I'm still working on, believe it or not, the final settlement with the insurance company, that didn't go as well as final, so when we get that final, we have to go to a reference hearing to get the final decision on that, and once that's done and the financing is lined up, I want, I'd really love to get going this summer, you know, in, in early to midsummer, so that it's buttoned up and ready to go by winter next year.
I mean, I get, one of my, my suggestions for consideration would be, you know, I know it's written that it's a three-year agreement, you know, and whatnot, but why wouldn't we look at the effective date of the agreement being when the occupancy certificate is administered? I, I'm just curious.
We were looking at it from a, from a finance standpoint for him, that he had a multi-year agreement in his hand when he went to the bank, as you said, part of the issue was the financing, so to at least give him some certainty for a period of time and then make it renewable, but also with the caveat that we're going to be making sure that whoever's pumping his system at two cents a gallon isn't stopping somewhere along the line, so we'll quarterly, we'll take his water bill and match it up with what he's dumping, and make sure that those things are copasthetic. If they're not, he'll have to come back in here and explain what's going on.
And what's our rate, seven cents?
Oh, it's seven cents, yeah. So this would save him between five and six hundred dollars.
And that's the rate when people do the same type of transfer?
So if you have your house pumped out...
Yeah.
It's seven cents a gallon plus whatever the...
Yeah, you hire somebody, so Rosanna's paying seven, and then they might charge you another four for their costs.
Okay.
Probably more, but they were doing that with me because we were doing a lot of volume, and they weren't dumping it in Situate anyway.
That's all for now, thanks.
Yeah, I, it's, it's a difficult decision, so, you know, I want the restaurant back in North Situate, I, I understand you going through the hardships and kind of support you getting back up on your feet, but, you know, we're going to set a precedent here for the town, and people are going to come for us and say, you did this for them, do this for me, you know, and it's not going to be necessarily sewer, it could be any type of town service that we provide, people are going to have a reason to come to us and say, hey, I'm a jewelry store on Front Street, and I'm not, I'm not doing well, and, you know, can you reduce the taxes for me, or can you, you know, do something? So it's really a slippery slope.
And that's why I'm asking, and I don't, I don't know if you're obligated to it, and that's a decision the town has to make.
Right, well, it's a decision we have to make, and, but I also understand the importance of Jamie's being in the harbor, so I, I really don't, it's, it's really...
Or in North Situate.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in North Situate. Yeah, so I, I really am kind of tossing in terms of what the terms of this agreement should be. I certainly understand some sort of period when you're getting, trying to get back up and get your business going, to have you have some sort of relief from that, but in all reality, we have no idea when sewer's going to come to North Situate. We've been talking about it since I've been on the board, and that's eleven years, and we're trying to work something out with Cohasset, and that's not a sure deal, and you heard all the discussions we had earlier today, we've got an enterprise fund that's, that's not making money, you know, we've talked about making North Situate the next, you know, the next route on the, on the plan, but, like you said, you've been waiting for it for ten years also, so...
Exactly.
You know, you know, I think monetarily, it's like five hundred dollars a week that you'd be saving from the...
Well, I'm still, you know, like I said, I'd still be paying substantially more than other residents in town, so it's not like I'm asking something for, for nothing, and...
Well, I guess what, I mean, a business somewhere else would argue, well, I have to pay, that's in my rent, right? I'm, I'm here, my rent is, my rent is more, and you're going to get an advantage because you're going to be able to sell a burger for a dollar less than somebody else, and you're, I mean, this is just what we're going to hear, right? Someone's going to come in and say, I'm not selling enough burgers because of Jamie's at six ninety-five, I got to sell my, for not, seven ninety-five because...
Well, I don't know how that is, because my costs are higher than theirs, so I don't know how they can make that argument, but...
No, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's, we're really opening up a can of worms, I think, in terms of, it's, we've never done this before, and I just think we have to really put parameter, if we're going to do this, we got to put parameters around it, and it's got to be, I think it has to be short-term, and, and I think you've got to be able to make your business work in the environment that you're in.
Well, my thing is, if, if the agreement is short-term, then it's not something I'm interested in doing, because until sewage comes there, I need this agreement in place to make the business viable, otherwise, it's really not something that me or anybody else will really be interested in doing in North Situate.
For five hundred dollars a week?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking thirty thousand dollars a year, extra costs, potentially a lot more than that. Over and above the thirty thousand, the twenty-five thousand more you're paying already than everybody else in the same situation, so I don't think people are going to be banging down your doors to get, to, for the same situation, to pay thirty thousand dollars more than what they're paying now for sewage.
It won't be the same situation, it'll be for, it'll be for some, some other scenario where they twist it to say, this is kind of what you did for Jamie, so, and I'm not, I'm not, I...
Well, I know there's a, there's a myriad of, of examples where town, state, federal governments do things for certain businesses to help certain situations in certain areas, so it's certainly not unprecedented at all.
Well, it isn't Situate. And I guess, I'm just saying, this is what we have to talk about, and this is what we're all thinking about, I just happen to be on saying it, as we try and make this decision. And, you know, I just think, I'm not against crafting some sort of an agreement, but I think we just have to be careful with what we do, and the parameters of it, and the term of it, because there, there will be some backlash when I'm not on the board and whenever, you know, in the future. So, you know, I, this is the first I've seen this, so this isn't an agreement, and...
No, we're talking about whether we should go forward to make an agreement.
Yeah, so it's, it's the, the first kind of steps to it, but that's, that's just what we're all thinking, and I'm saying, so, so I don't know what, what, you know, what are the, what are the parameters that you need, you know?
Well, I would, you know, this is...
We could say it's going to be until sewer gets there, because I don't know when sewer's getting there, you know?
Well, I, I would like to make it renewable, you know, annually, as long as I'm living up to my end of the bargain, until the sewage gets there.
Yeah, so that, that's, that could be a ten-year agreement, that could, or who knows, forever. I mean, we just don't know, we're, we're hearing our sewers at capacity, you know, we certainly...
Well, if I knew sewer was never going to be there, then I would never put the restaurant there, so, whether I had an agreement or not, so, that's...
Yeah, I mean, it's our call to get it there, I'm just, I got to look at the, the most extreme picture from one side, and that's...
You just got to decide whether you want businesses in North Situate or not.
No, that's, I don't think that's, no, that's not what's, Ralph, we have been supporting you and your town.
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, I'm just...
That's really, you know, don't, and that's what bothers me, is someone said to me that was, you know, social media or something, you know, and you know downright well that I've known your dad for a long, long time, and we support, you know, everyone in this town...
I'm not saying that, and I'm saying, I'm just saying that the town had, you know, if they want this to happen, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're a businessman, you 've been a businessman, you know, you know numbers and dollars and cents, you know?
Absolutely, but I, you know, I agree, Tony said it, and I couldn't agree more, you know, what we do for Ralph, we need to, you know, if, and I kind of think, I'm racking my brain trying to think if there's a scenario even close to you, you know, we got to be consistent and do the same thing for someone else, that's...
Well, if it's a similar situation, I would hope you would take that situation with as much consideration as you do this, and every situation is, deserves its own review and merit.
So here's some, here are my thoughts. Yes, I want your restaurant in North Situate, so let's just get that off the table, okay? It has to be an agreement that obviously, and I think I'm hearing you say that, you know, that the option of the town, and as far as like if, if things aren't going the right way, the town can bring in and say, it's not going right...
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Hold on, I appreciate that, because to me, that's the way I see the agreement. Clearly, from your vantage point, you can't have a board in five years or six years say, we're not going to go forward with it. If you're going to invest that amount of money for business, I, I totally understand that, it's just, obviously, it's a partnership to make sure that you're able to continue to function and be competitive, and I appreciate that. I do agree, and this is something that the board needs to understand, is that if there are other people, businesses in North Situate who might need some kind of relief along this line, that's something that we are going to have to open up. It's not just a unique situation in my mind, because you have to be fair to the businesses in your district. I actually am looking, thinking right out of the gate, off the top of my head is not so much Green Bush or Front Street, I'm thinking of Hummerock, it's a prime example, you know, the restaurant down there is really having some serious issues with septic, and I'm like, that's an example where they could come in and say, if you want the business district in Hummerock to survive, restaurants should be able to possibly go forward here, and so, that's an example where you could, and I think, just from a perspective of the board, it needs to be very clear going forward, so people understand that, you know, the town is working to maintain its business districts, but also being fair about it, because I would not want to have somebody in the future come in and say, I need some of this, and the board's, future board says no, because that's the fairness issue. The, you know, consistency is important for the board, and I, I will say, you know, with this, the only, the only thing that I'm looking at, these, these itemized terms, there are five of them here, one is that there's no change of use, it's a restaurant use, that's what we're doing it for, that's the point, we want a business there to maintain, I...
Yeah, another use you wouldn't really need, because you would just maintain a tight tank and pump it semi-annually, and it wouldn't be an issue.
But I'm just saying, you know, because the ideal is when, and if, then that changes the game, because now you have the overlay district potential for having, you don't have to, but that's the whole concept, two to three stories with...
Well, yeah, with more competition, more everything, it opens up everything, but that's fine, it also opens up, you know, an opportunity for development for increased business in the area, which I'm sure will happen.
But, so, my feeling on it is I'm supportive of it, going down with some, with these terms, but I, I also say, we also have to be aware that there could be other businesses that will ask for something, it's certainly, whether it's in North Situate or in Hummerock, those are the two, those are the two districts that are desperately trying to survive right now. Those are my thoughts. Any questions, observations, quite generally?
No, I think that's a lot, no, I think it all still needs to be debated and discussed, because even though there aren't restaurants really across the street from you today, aside from Dribbles, right, all of a sudden this opens up what can be done on that property, I don't know. That's my, you know, Pandora's box then.
He's, I'd say Ralph's even at a more disadvantage, he's on a ledge and across the street, they do have a leaching field under the parking lot, and it's...
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, opening a new place would be a different situation, I'd think, I mean, nobody would want to come in and face that situation. This is just like a, I know, it's a unique situation, and, you know, to be hon, I mean, I really want to do this because I grew up in a restaurant, but I don't know if it's really the, the best economical decision to, to do going forward, but for me, it makes sense, personally.
I see the value of it, and I just think, you know, I think you're going to have to take any requests one at a time, and just vet it, and see the value of it, if there is a value. Your restaurant is, was certainly very successful as far as the confidence of the people and the residents in going there. I don't see it as being the panacea for salvaging North Situate at this point.
Ah, no, you need sewage to really bring it back, you know?
Sewage will help with residents and mixed use, and, you know, as I say, but I will say, it's certainly necessary to have it, and it's kind of like the cornerstone, if you will, of that business district right now. There are other businesses up there, a lot of them, they're, you know, they're, you know, they're successful.
I'm happy to hear the ice cream store is potentially reopening, and it'd be nice to get a bank in there again, too.
Maybe we can talk to Bank of America, and they can put a ATM on what they did down on Front Street. Other questions from the audience? Anybody have any questions? Yes?
You know, I just want to say...
Henry, I need your, I need your name and address.
Oh, yes, Henry Yeh, Sixteenth Wuladen Row.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, if, if it wasn't for the fire, it would be still going the same way, and the, we, we had a wine shop there in, in North Situate, and the wine shop wants to open a dolly team with fresh feast, this was three years ago, and we didn't pass the Board of Health because of sewer.[1745.54] And, you know, we're, we're okay, we, you know, we're not gonna fight for, we, uh, because hopefully someday the sewer will come to North Situate. But I fully support bringing Jamie back. I think it's, uh, it's important not just for the North Situate, it's important for the town, because everybody know Jamie, you know?
Thank you.
So, and I, I won't, I won't apply for exception.
That'll be on record now, Henry. Write that down, Michelle.
Thank you.
Francesa Coleman, nineteen eighty-three Brown. I understand your hesitation. The businesses in North Situate or in Situate are not thriving, they're struggling, and this might be the first time that you need to make an exception, but I believe that you need to think long-term, or put it in your budget for next year or the following, to find ways to support business.
Thank you.
It's one business closed by the week in North Situate.
Right, when's the, uh, when's the meeting on North Situate?
Uh, April three, fourth.
Anne Rabanne, tenth and Hesbro. I think as John has pointed out, we have to take each item on its face. We can, we could anticipate somebody coming in, looking for something, and private is down the road, the board is different, et cetera, et cetera. But this is right now, this is immediate. We have this horrific hole in North Situate, foot traffic is non-existent. This is an exception, and every so often we need to have an exception. And I think that Karen's point of, and Jim as well, set it up so that it starts immediately over three years, it's gonna take at least probably what, a year or so to get back up, Ralph?
Mm-hmm.
So then he still has another two years to, to really keep going. And who is to say that it is so successful that he doesn't need the help from the town when it comes time to renew it? So I think that this is something that you all need to not anticipate what might happen, but rather think about this as happening now.
Thank you.
Just, Anne, our job is to think what might happen, that, that's what we have to do up here, we, and it's, I, I'm not against giving you some sort of situation, and I'm not against it all, but my job up here is to think, what's the best interest of the term, or in the long-term for the town? And if we just made decisions on people that we liked and things that we liked, we'd be giving the store away, and that's not, that's not what we can do. And we, and I'm, I'm, when I'm done, you know, our, our job here is to think about what could happen, because it's gonna happen. In fact, John brought you a great example, Hummerock will be here within the next month. They will, they're, because they're in the exact same situation, and we have a sewer enterprise fund that's leaking money. You know, it's not like this is a profitable enterprise fund, that we have excess capacity and excess profits. So, and I'm all for helping, I'm all for helping the, the local businesses, and I'm all for helping you through this, but we just have to think this through, this is the first I've seen this, and this is a long-term plan, or this is three years, saying until sewer gets there, um, you know, I don't, I don't know what it is, you know, and I just think we've gotta figure out what the best thing is, and we've gotta, we've gotta craft it so that it helps the business, but also does not open up a string of, of requests coming forward that the town frankly doesn't have the ability to, to handle. Um, and that's what our job is. I'd, I go to Jamie's all the time, I'd, I want it open right away, um, and, but that's not, that's not what I sit in this seat for.
Well, you're kinda limited, if you're limited to existing businesses that need help too, instead of new businesses as well, you know?
You know, people will do it just to make an extra two hundred bucks. They will.
Maybe, I don't know, it's a lot of effort just to, believe me. If you have, if you have a system that works at all, you're not gonna do it, but-
Andrea Hunt, sixty-six Manloch Road. I think one thing that we need to try and slow down and focus on is the fact that, as difficult as it is, and we have got a sewage financial issue, at some point in time, the town is gonna have to address the fact that we are almost at capacity with our sewage system, whether or not we tie in with Tri-Town thing that's going on, that we're talking about in Hall and Color Asset, or whether or not we talk about improving the system that we already have. We already do have pipes running down the tracks into North Situate. It wouldn't be that much to tie in if our septic, if our sewage system was upgraded to be able to accept North Situate Village. So, the possibility of, of actually offering sewage to North Situate should be on a priority in the course of thinking down the line. We're talking about redeveloping business sections in Green Bush, we're talking about allowing large developments to tie into sewage. It's extremely important for the town in general to have business districts that are viable, and the only way North Situate, which has been an established business district forever, is going to be able to get sewage at some point in time. The pipes are there, along the rail, all we have to do is tie into them. Whether it's temporary, whether a private treatment system is built somewhere in the village, but the focus has got to be on getting sewage into the city. We have to have that hope, or else the village will collapse, and, and making this one exception for Jamie's in the meantime, I think will allow businesses in general, and the people who run their businesses in North Situate Village, to have the hope that they need that the town is going to address some type of a sewage resolve for the village.
I just wanna say that, you know, I don't know if people haven't been listening for the past four years that we've been on the board, but there's a, we, we, we're down the road trying to solve the sewage issue in Situate. It is a priority for the board. We are working through the wheeling system of going through Cohasset in Hall. It takes a lot of steps, so the insinuation that it's not a priority for this board, I take offense to, because we all have prioritized it for many years, and it takes time. We understand that we have an issue with our sewer capacity. So again, it's balancing our resources, right? We prioritize water right now, that's our focus right now. Sewer is on the radar as well. So, I don't disagree that we have to jumpstart North Situate at all, but I just want folks out there to know that it is a priority, it has been a priority, and things take time, and unfortunately, that's government, and it's really darn frustrating. Um, so, you know, we're at the point where, um, you know, we're talking to Senator O'Connor, Representative Moschino, we need their help to get Cohasset on board, to help us will this sewage through them into Hull, 'cause Hull needs it too. So, we're getting closer.
Just one, just wanna address one thing that Mrs. Hunt said. These developments, like the Drew Project, they're not taking anybody's capacity from the system, they are making payments to us to create their own capacity through us doing I and I projects. Plant is not gonna have the type of capacity that we need to bring in North Situate, Minnetonka, Gannet, which are those places that the state is gonna look at and tell us, you need to sewer these places because of the environmental impact that they're gonna have in Cohasset Harbor and those places. We're not gonna be able to create that kinda capacity cheaply doing I and I projects. So we're not giving North Situate's capacity to the Drew Project, they're creating their own capacity to tie into the system. So, uh, we had a meeting scheduled for yesterday to try to see what path we're gonna get out. Unfortunately, the health town manager was not very gracefully, fell and broke his hand, so he, he missed it, so we gotta follow it up. But I think we're making some progress on what I would call the Phase One option, which is kinda that little program that we talked about. I know Cohasset's on board with that, they, they are anxious to talk about that, so we're just gonna get a meeting, get the engineers looking at that, make sure that doesn't preclude us doing the larger project later. So we're, we're working on it, and the longest thing for us to do, the thing that would take the longest, would be to try to cite another treatment facility in North Situate from a permitting standpoint. The EPA and DEP have already told us, even if you had a place to put it, put a groundwater discharge plant, that's gonna take longest from a permitting process, 'cause it just takes forever. So, it's, it's on our plate, you know, I talk to those guys regularly, John was at the meeting, I know, so we've got, uh, John's been to some meetings, so once we get Cohasset and figure out a way to, to take it, wheel it, we'll be able to get going on it. So, it's something we're working on, I think we're closer than we have been, and-
And to, so, getting back, Ralph, to the issue at hand, you know, there is maybe on the horizon sewer coming to North Situate. It's gonna be coming, if it does, through that wheeling, if you will, of sewage to Cohasset, Cohasset to Hull, as opposed to what we had hoped for, which was to have a pipe going right down Three A and go straight to Hull. Unfortunately, Cohasset is not in the frame of mind to wanna pay what it may take, but they're willing to do maybe the smaller phase. So, that's good for North Situate. But I just wanna make sure everybody's clear, because I'm not sure I've made it known, because in the past, the board's talked about priorities, talking about sewer districts, and this is not to you, Ralph.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it's a very passionate issue, a lot of people are concerned about North Situate. I wish there were more people in Hummerock, because I'm sure they would feel the same way about the business district that is practically dead, although we have a applicant that's gonna propose some mixed use that may help it next after you. The next priority is not in North Situate, it, it really goes to neighborhoods, and I feel for people who are in those districts, in that district, who are gonna be leapfrogged, and I have no problems with that, because of the business and the concern as a business operator, trying to make sure leap was successful. People need to know that, and I think it'd be coriun fair that if they found out after the fact that they were the priority, but instead, because there's a pipe that was put under the track, we connect all the businesses, and once the businesses are connected, you're not talking about your present business, you're talking about developers who are going to build condos above those uses, which means they're gonna increase the sewage flow, and that's the concern, the discussion, it's a fair debate that people in town need to have. I'm not talking to you, Ralph, I'm talking just generally, that I think people need to understand. Because I don't think it's fair that three streets and the people of Beaver Dam are not gonna be given that opportunity to have a say in it. If you, if the board, sewer commissioners were leapfaring, I'm not gonna be on the board. But I'm saying my piece right now, 'cause I think it's only fair that those people have somebody to advocate for them, and maybe in the future. But, let's bring it back, 'cause it's getting late. And I want your restaurant, because there's some people who go down to my Sandhills General Store who I'd rather see go back to your restaurant. I'd like to see if we could maybe put an agreement together, Jim?
Yeah, I'd like the board just to, just to take a vote in favor of this approach, and then I'll draft the agreement, 'cause I spent a lot of time on the phone with Cindy, I'm like, look, I'm not spending any more money now until the board gives me direction. And then I'll get it drafted up, bring it back, and you can approve the draft.
Well, what are the, I mean, I don't know that you need sewage right now, right? I mean, there's no, nothing's going-
No, I don't think anything, yeah.
-for construction, I mean, you don't need it till it opens.
Exactly.
You have all your permits, sorry to interrupt, Tony, you, you said you had all your-
We're pretty ninety-nine percent, I think there's one small permit we need left.
Okay, sorry.
I, I do just wanna make one quick comment about what was just said. First of all, it's a huge deal to put sewer in any area. It's gonna rip up the streets, it's gonna be a mess for years. That's what it's done in every area of town that we've gone in, and it costs everybody to do it through Cohasset, it's probably gonna be more expensive than us doing it ourselves, it's gonna cost, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars to hook up to the sewer, you know, so it, it's, it's not a free meal, it's gonna, it's gonna be expensive, and then obviously you have the cost of sewage at that point in time. I, I am a little bit more optimistic than Jim in terms of our capacity, because about forty percent of the stuff that we process at that treat is seawater. So, if we can ever find the big hole in the system, it's gonna open up a ton of capacity at that plant and allow us to do things. As John mentioned, we are jumping over one whole area of town to get to North Situate, and I think we've all agreed that that's the right thing to do right now.
I mean, but yes.
But, yeah, but John. So, you know, it is a priority, it is the right thing to do, we do need to, to get that area going. Um, I do, I do think we have to figure out what the terms of this agreement are in terms of, I don't have, I don't really have a problem with the rate, you know, you've gotta get your business model to work, I can't, you know, at five hundred dollars a week, a future board could just cancel it if there's no sewer there, and you still gotta be able to stay in business if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna work under these terms. So, that's up to you and your business, you know, your business model. But, you know, I think there's gotta be a, a clear starting time and a clear stopping time and a reevaluation time over it, and I don't know that three years is, I think, personally, I think that's too long. So, I mean, you guys vetted out a little bit, but I, I don't think it has to start until you open the door.
Yeah, it's not three years, it's really only a two-year deal, because we're not even open for a year.
Right, well, I guess I'm assuming when you open, 'cause you're not gonna save any money, you're not even gonna flush it once and then, while you're building it.
And you're, you're only looking for relief for-
Well, I'm looking for it too, I was looking until the sewage came to North Situate, I mean, I was with the anticipation of three to five years.
I, I don't have a problem with like a three-year with the option of the town for an additional year, option of the town additional year. The idea is everybody buys mine, and then if it works, then, and hopefully we'll have some better news in the next three to five years about when sewer's coming to North Situate in that way, but it's at the, the town.
I hope to have new, yeah, I hope to have news in the next couple of months, three to five years.
Well, the reason why I say this, but it's gonna take a number of years to put it in and get it here, and so, I mean, let's be realistic, it could be seven years, it could be five years, I just want people to understand.
Every other restaurant in North Situate, I don't know what they have, but-
There is no other restaurant.
Well, you've got the Searse's, you've got the-
Yeah, they're on, they have septic systems, yeah.
And there'll be another place that we wanna go in there, because, or potentially, which is great, I mean, we want another restaurant there.
Just two, two quick, I, I don't see why, I mean, you could, he needs to get a contract in order to do his financing, but there's no reason you can't craft it to say, you know, execute it now, and it will be a year and a half-
I don't even care if it starts now.
...fomenting when you move in, it's just language. Yeah, the effective date of the term can be at whatever.
If you need this for your financing, then-
Another, another point that we haven't discussed, and, but just to speak to the, sort of the one-year renewal, and, you know, what happens if, you know, we're three years, five years from now, and we're still having this conversation, would you be willing to have a clause in there that would provide future boards with your operating budget, so that, you know, they can see that if-
Well, if I'm making a ton of money, I don't expect the town to-
Right, but we need to-
I think that's fair at that point, I think if we could tie it to somebody like that-
No, you can put it in, the board can ask for it, if he says, I'm not giving it to you, the board says, fine, we're not gonna do the contract, so you don't actually have to put it in, you just-
No, but I think it's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping, you know, that we can work together with it, you know?
I like your idea of saying, you know, that, that the town's option, 'cause the town should be reasonable about it, and I understand the concern you have, which is, you know-
Well, and I think if I'm doing the right thing and I have the support, then I think it should be something that we can-
We hope within three years we have something, here's the plan, that you know when the definitive in North Situate, right, you do that first, you connect that in, then you'd go down further and go down further and connect those.
So Jim, you're just looking for us to give you sort of a motion right now, to move forward, to draft some sort of a-
To draft an agreement, kinda based-
Not specifically based on-
Based upon these, and then if we wanna make changes, we can make changes, but at least I have something to work with, and I'll add in that there's no change of use, I'll add in there's no change, transfer the agreement, and then I have the secret codicile that we cancel Mr. Hunt's loyalty code.
What happens if, when we raise the sewer rates?
That's what he's coming to like now.
So Jim, that's gonna be a agreement.
Instead of you, he's not coming himself.
Mr. Hunt is still in the general store, just for noise and-
What do we do when, when we raise the sewer rates next year?
Uh, that's a very good point.
Well, again, he's, he'll be out of rate, too.
Well, I think it's the delta.
Yeah, it's a delta.
Again, that's, that's up to you.
I think it's the distance, that the discount is five cents or whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's up to you, right now it's set at two cents. If you wanna make-
Yeah, whatever, the sewer rate goes up outside.
I think it does, I think you're absolutely right.
'Cause I, I can't imagine it going up dramatically, does it go up from about one cent to one point oh two cents or something?
We raised the-
We just raised.
-pump about a penny, I think, it wasn't much.
It only goes a penny, a penny and a half.
Yeah.
But it should be tied to whatever the actual-
So, why don't we have, there's, there's a consensus on the board to, we're gonna move things forward here, to draft something, so that just that we're based on, and we'll begin to filtrate that, or, or filter that, I don't know, Mr. Constantine, if you have an attorney, or if you're the number one, but at least we can get an agreement that works.
I'll try to have a draft in by next week. So now, now I have the parameters to send out to council, she'll type it up, shouldn't take her that long.
All right, and then we'll, is that okay with the board, and then we'll have to take a look at it, and then we'll forward on it, but we're giving you basically the green light that we're supportive of it.
Okay.
Is that enough detail for you to keep going forward?
Absolutely.
Good.
Okay, we'll have a tone.
And just to remind anybody that's just tuning in, we, earlier, many hours ago, the chair requested that we have a review of the whole sewer sys, I don't know, how did you phrase it?
Policies.
We take a look at all of our capacity and, and have that conversation after town meeting.
Yep. Thank you very much, thanks for, thanks for taking the time.
All right, if we can move on to the discussion vote, presentation of annual town meeting, If we can move on to the discussion vote, presentation of annual town meeting petition article 26, to amend the zoning map to extend Humorock Village Residential Overlay Zoning District.
And you're staying, right?
And we've got Ken Dupell, petitioner. Find out.
Hey, Jim, that agreement you're going to give to us to look at first, right?
Yep.
So this is one of the warrant articles. This is the petitioner, and it's, I'm going to do a presentation about what they're proposing.
Very high-tech presentation compared to the earlier power points. I do have eight and a half by 11 copies of the zoning map if you'd like to see.
We've got it all, actually.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a local environmental and land use attorney, and I represent South River Marina Realty LLC. Ken Dupell and Scott Kurzog, who are sitting with me, are managers of the LLC. And the LLC owns the property at 21 Central Avenue, which is the former South River Yacht Yard. The property is located within the B, the Business District in Humorock, and a portion of the property is located within the Humorock Village Residential Overlay District. And the purpose of this article is to put the entire parcel within the overlay district. And if I might explain briefly the map, this is a blowup of the zoning map. The Business District, it can see is in red. 21 Central is a triangular, excuse me, a T-shaped piece of property. This is Marshville Avenue. Unfortunately, you can't see the bridge on the zoning map, but this is the bridge, Marshville Avenue, Central Avenue. And this parcel has frontage on Marshville Avenue, cuts across, then actually has frontage on Central Avenue, comes down, and then there's a private way here. The green hatched area is the present overlay district, and you'll see that in fact portions of the property are already located within the overlay district, but the shore side portion is not, and I'll explain to you why that happened. In 2007 and 2008, the town undertook to rezone portions of Humorock to promote change and economic development, and particularly economic development in the Business District, which is deemed to be underutilized, and I think you've recognized that this evening. And the concept was to promote development by encouraging multifamily use in the Business District. The town hired consultants who drew up a map with the proposed overlay district, and the map actually included the entirety of this property. However, during the workshopping of the zoning process, several people in the neighborhood, including the then operator of this property, which is operated historically as a boatyard and a marina, advocated to remove the property from the overlay district. I think the intention was to preserve the boatyard use of that property. And as a result, the final map carved out a portion of the property, and that's the waterfront portion that's outlined in bold red letters. As you recognize, the boatyard industry has dramatically changed over the years. There's a large metal building on site, there are no large boat dealers who use large metal boat buildings any longer, there's no demand for rack storage for boats inside the building. This property actually has a travel lift, and there's no need any these days for the use of a travel lift any longer. My clients are going to keep the marina, and the marina is a very valuable business asset, and they're prepared to invest in upgrading the marina. They do want to maintain some of the boatyard uses, but it's really no longer economically viable to operate a dedicated boatyard at this property. And so they're in the process of exploring, you know, other potential uses for the property, again, consistent entirely with the purpose of the overlay district, which was to encourage economic development in the Business District. And they can only do this if the entire property is located within the overlay district. Now, we had discussed this concept with the planning department early last year. I don't have the words in my mouth, but there's general support for this concept. However, they were principally focused on Green Bush zoning, and so simply didn't have the capacity to take on yet another zoning map change. And this is just a zoning map change, we're not proposing changing any of the zoning relating to that district. So we presented this citizen's petition. This has been presented to the planning board, which voted last week to support the article unanimously. We presented this to advisory and the zoning board of appeals on an advisory basis. They also support this article. The only public comments that we received during any of these public hearings have been positive, everyone seems to support this. And in fact, the people who initially requested that that portion of the property taken out of the district actually have signed the petitions to support this article. Again, my clients don't have a specific project in mind, but they really can't evaluate the potential uses without putting this property back into the district or fully into the district. And so we're asking the board's support to the extent it's permissible to support the article. So again, this is simply a zoning map change to put the entirety of the parcel back in the overlay district. We're not proposing any changes to the zoning bylaw. And again, there's no project that's specifically being proposed, we want the ability to explore whatever is consistent with the overlay district zoning.
Excuse me.
And we're here to answer any questions.
Questions.
So the parcel you guys own, is it just in red? Or is it though?
No, it's three spots of green.
So, again, it's oddly shaped, it runs along the shoreline, the marina's obviously here, this is the water sheet. It has frontage on Marshville Avenue, comes across here, so this portion is already in the overlay district, extends up here, so this is frontage in Central Avenue, comes down. So this little piece, this little piece, and this little piece are already in the overlay district. When they mapped this, they took this section out of the district.
So is that because your clients bought the two other lots that are in the overlay district and then bought the boatyard?
It was one parcel, wasn't it, guys?
Well, they're technically two lots, but they've always been in common ownership, so it's really one parcel. So I think technically they're historically, and I own the title with me...
You're saying they merged into one lot, or you're saying that they were separate lot? That's what I'm trying to figure. I'm trying to figure out how the prior owner said, "I want my boatyard out, but I want to be in the overlay district for the other two." The only way that would happen is he doesn't want to...
And to answer any of those questions, all I can say is reviewing all of the minutes in the town records as to what happened. And we did confirm that some members of the planning board who recalled what happened, and they said that a portion of the property was taken out of the district.
Where's the line for the two lots?
I don't know without any title documents, but again, I think that this lot may be historically a separate lot, but again, it's been all treated as one entire parcel. In fact, in the assessors' records, it's treated as one parcel, so I don't want to confuse the issue. Here's where, one of the assessors' parcels that is shaped like this, historically, I think there may have been two lots in the title that have been combined under common ownership.
But that's no way these guys didn't buy that, these guys bought the whole thing.
Exactly, it's one parcel, one assessors' parcel, that we're requesting that the entirety of that assessors' parcel be placed within the district.
When did you guys buy it?
June.
Yeah.
This June?
Eighteen, yeah. So you bought it knowing that it was zoned this way?
Correct.
Yes.
And you bought when, okay, so I just want to make sure I'm getting it clear, forgive me. You bought the red outline, including the lot that fronts on Marshfield, including the lot that fronts on Central?
Correct. This is one zone, this is one assessors' parcel.
No, what I'm saying, for purposes of purchase, did they buy them separately on different names, or is it all under one name?
No, it's all...
It's all one name?
I think we're getting, with all due respect, I think we're kind of getting bogged down in title issues. This is one assessor parcel that's owned by the LLC.
And what is the right, on the parcel that's in the red right now? Tell me again, I can't read the little...
How's that zoned?
This is all, so the red is business, so the underlying...
It's all business, okay.
The underlying zoning is business, so this property is located entirely within the Business District, but only a portion is located within the overlay district.
Okay.
The overlay district allows, for example, multifamily use.
Mix use.
Not mixed use, it's multifamily use. So I believe the concept was to promote revitalization of the Business District, that you allow multifamily use, and I believe that, you know, there was a multifamily use project that was approved here, consistent with the overlay district zoning.
They gave it...
So it's a little different than Green Bush in some respects, because this is multifamily as an overlay.
Will the, will Marina be allowable under that if it were to resound?
Yes, nothing's going to change the use of the marina.
The underlying zoning stays in place, this is just an overlay.
The overlay piece, okay.
So the only reason you'd want to do this is you want to put, you want to put dense residential stuff there.
We may want to consider multifamily, that's correct.
So...
And/or other uses.
Right, but you could do...
So it would not be consistent with either the underlying zoning or the overlay zoning.
Right, but you wouldn't need this to do anything but that. Now, I'm saying it's a bad thing, I mean, there's other stuff right to the left of it.
Right, I think the answer to your question, yes, we'd like the ability to evaluate whether multifamily, which was done here, would be appropriate for here. Again, we don't know the answer to that question because it's, at this point, conceptual. Until such times the map changes, it's really just an academic question.
So the nautical mile is in those other green sections, the old nautical mile?
Yes.
No, down further, Adam, that...
Condos.
Yes, right, that's Steve Lehman's old...
That's right, that's right.
Salamondo.
Right, so they were able, I believe they were able to use multifamily because of the overlay district.
Where's the bar that the guy wants to?
Right in that little corner.
Yeah, it's the little corner.
Is that where it is, Adam?
Well, that's the, that's the little store.
It's down a little bit, I thought, yeah.
So it's in that, it's not in the property you own?
Correct.
It's next to, next to it.
Got it. Okay.
I think it's a great fit, but going back, you guys were here and listened, talking about can the infrastructure handle it? I mean, can there be septic systems and, I mean, there isn't, I should know this, there's no towns, it's all septic out there, isn't it?
So just to be clear, we would need, if it's indeed viable, we would need to go through the permitting process in order to do this. So all of those questions would have to be answered to the town's satisfaction in order to get the permits to do this. But again, we can't even take the first step unless the zoning map changes.
Right.
And as I said, it was originally intended to be in the district, it's rather kind of an odd situation.
It's funny it's not, yeah.
It makes perfect sense.
Yeah. That might have been the previous owner's idea, just to, you know...
Previous manager.
Managers, yes.
Stand corrected, yes.
When did the planning board review this?
They voted in the last meeting.
Correct. We've had several, I think we had one presentation prior, and then the planning board took it up when they were voting on all of the articles and voted to move this forward.
Just one other question, sorry. The other question is, remind me, citizen's petition, if it passes town meeting, is it a binding agreement? It is? Okay.
It has to be two-thirds.
Two-thirds? Okay, I just did...
No, seventy...
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, zoning changes, town meeting, have to be approved by two-thirds.
And I'll just say one other thing, you know, I looked at every address here, and they're all the butters, they're all, they're people from Humorock for a long time, you know, if that's what, you know, their wish, and they live right around there, I respect that.
And again, during the permitting process, there's going to be a multiple public...
Revise.
Public hearings, and so we welcome the input of the neighborhood. We did, Ken and Scott did consult with people in the neighborhood, this isn't done in a vacuum. And again, there's been nothing but positive comments made on this proposal, because I think people in the neighborhood recognize that the property is underutilized, it has this ugly metal building there, and I think the people in the neighborhood would be interested in seeing something different there. But again, subject to all of the town's other rules and regulations.
Yeah, I, after hearing what's going on, I think, I'm not always against everything. I think it's a good idea, I think it fits right in with that area, it adds to the tax base, you know, the infrastructure, like Sean said, I looked at the list of people, and they're all the neighbors, they're butters, so it doesn't seem to be any pushback there.
Less than...
You know, I think it's probably a good fit, and I don't know whether they knew in the first place, but, you know, it's right on the water, it's a nice properties, I'd like to have a mixed use there if we could, but I think, I think it's a good fit.
Good. Anybody else?
Yeah. Do we need to vote on it, or do we...
No, we just opine on it.
Yeah.
Okay. We vote when we know that we vote in favor and not in favor when we go through the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, great, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Glad you're staying late with us.
No, it was a pleasure.
Okay, now let's move on to new business. Discuss change of the board of selection meeting from June 18th to June 25th, 2019. Can I have a motion?
No. Wait, wait, excuse me, discussion. Sorry.
Why are we doing this?
Who's in charge of this?
Because I think some people are going to Ireland.
Oh.
So they're going to move the meeting.
So we're moving it from June 18th to when, the 23rd, 25th?
June 25th.
Do you actually know what you're doing that far in advance? Yes.
You make it happen meetings anyway, so...
Take it outside. I'm fine with it.
I thought you'd be against it.
Tony is.
Anybody want to move motion?
No, I'm afraid.
Move to...
Go ahead, Sean.
Move to accept the change of board of selection meeting date from June 18th, 2019 to June 25th, 2019.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Camfield, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're going to go to a discussion vote, the board of selectmen liaisons to Shellfish and Willows Walk committees.
Oh, yeah.
I'll raise for Shellfish if you don't care what you...
I went to both of them last week. Shellfish for only a minute. They're both on the same night, so you can't...
When do they meet?
Well, they're right down the hall from each other.
When do they meet?
Last week.
No, what's the regularity of their meetings? On what day do they meet?
Do you know when they meet on the Willows Walk Golf?
I think it's Wednesday.
Yeah, they meet on Wednesday, and it's like once a month.
Yeah.
They meet that much more often than that.
So who'd like to?
I'll do the golf one.
I'll do it, too.
What do you want to do?
I'll do Shellfish, if that's all that anyone else?
All right, so I don't...
They both had great turnout, so there was...
Move to appoint Sean Harris as the liaison to the Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion by myself, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move to appoint Tony Vignani and Maura Kern as the liaisons to the Willows Walk Golf Committee.
Second.
Motion by myself, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. Now let's move on to the seasonal population estimate.
It's going to be a little different.
We vote the population for the, every year.
I'm looking for it. I'm looking for it. Somebody have it?
Not yet.
Oh, maybe it's just a copy.
It's in your, your packet, I mean, in your hard copy.
There it is. Move to approve the 2019 seasonal population estimate, as of July 10th, 2019. Our resident population estimate is 28,500.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Kern. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we need to finalize, discuss, vote, finalize the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrant, and assign the articles. There we go.
Do we have a list of them, or no, just on hard copy, just on electronically?
Just electronically.
Electronically. So if everybody can get to page, let's-
Page fifty, fifty-two.
Annual.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
I'm really down here. Yep, fifty-one.
Everybody there? Hang on, let me get there.
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty-one.
So, have we voted these? I thought we voted these before. Did we not?
I don't think we did.
Put them in the warrant.
All right.
But we didn't vote to approve or not to approve.
Right. You didn't sign them yet.
So, do we want to vote to approve articles one through three of the special town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Kern. All in favor?
Aye.
Those will be my articles.
How are we doing that?
Sean, why don't you do them all?
I'll take the bulk again. Get on my back, everybody. Get on my back. All right, so-
Get the violin out?
Oh, you can do that when I get off the board.
All right.
I'll take articles one, or how about if we move to accept articles one through?
Do we need to, excuse me, Mr. Chair, do we need to say that we just approved articles one through three of the special town meeting?
I thought I did.
Did you say that?
I did.
Okay, I don't remember, but-
Did we vote?
We did.
We did.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we going to be considering a consent order?
Yes.
I think we probably will.
Agenda, whatever it is called?
Which means-
John's off the hook.
Get on my back, I'll be carrying the bulk again. All right. Do you want to go through each article one by one, there are 27, or do you want to just say we accept articles one through 27 and divvy them out?
Well, let me just look.
Where are we now? One through?
I'll tell you what, we'll go Article One, compensation of elected officials. Anybody concerned there?
We'll just support.
No.
All right. Article Two, reports of boards and committees, that's just going to be an opportunity to kind of give a state of the state.
Keep it short.
So, three is capital plan.
Article Three is the capital improvement plan. Yep.
So this is the $4 million design that we don't really have any-
We still don't have, right.
Have any kind of plan on yet. And the $8 million for-
Green sand filter.
Green sand filter.
Right, which really comes into whatever plan we're doing, I would imagine.
No, because this one's at well 17A.
I know, but if we're building a huge water treatment plant, we may, I don't know.
No, you need to do this at the site.
I know, but we, maybe, depending on what the bigger plan is, I don't even know how that comes into play.
No, you wouldn't put the green sand filter at the water treatment plant, because you don't need to put all the water through the treatment, through the green sand filter, only the water coming out of a well needs to go through the green sand filter.
I completely understand. So my point is, they're both kind of together, because we need a water plan. Like, we're about to spend $70 million on water, and it includes this, 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 and this, or whatever we're doing, I mean, we don't even know.
But that's what the, isn't that what the engineering and design water plant in SCADA is, are? That is to get that engineering and scope of work for us, right?
Have we seen another?
And that's what my understanding is.
Well, the consultants were supposed to come back to us with the plant. This isn't to do the plan, this is to do the actual engineering.
Well, this will be both, because they'll look at-
Well, he just said that he's gonna-
They're doing that, they're looking at the plant now, and then they're going to come back and look at, this money will help look at one plant, you know, one brand-new plant, with two of everything. Or, one new plant with one of everything, and then going back to the old plant and rebuilding everything in the old plant. That's part of the $4 million.
Because we basically need redundancy.
Because you need redundancy, right. We can't shut anything off ever, and that's why we're in this situation.
So I thought at the last meeting, they were going to come back to us with a report that told us the direction of those things. This wasn't paying for that.
No, they already have a report that's being done on the plant now. This is our plant, this is the problem, this is what we need, this is all the things we need, but I don't think that's going to design or tell us we're going to do one or two. As far as saying that was going to be part of the form, that's going to be the next set of engineering, whether we can do one big or two.
No, but conceptually, they're going to tell us, you need a new water plant, you need this, you need this, and general numbers, that's what I thought we said, that he's going to come back with kind of general numbers of what, what his plan is to-
What the $4 million is going to entail.
Right, what do we get for $4 million?
I think that's all we need, Jim, is we haven't seen what we're going to get for the $4 million.
All right, I'm back next week. But the green sand filter is part of the plant, it's been part of the plan all along.
Yes.
Yeah, we know that, the one at 17A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's you, isn't that letter U?
Yes, you, yes.
But Tony, I think, felt like he wanted more information back then, and you're-
Well, I get it, I mean, it's a huge structure, that's, I mean, it's an $8 million plant that's going to treat water coming out of that well.
Although, I'm going back to R for $4 million.
Yeah, well, that definitely-
We'll bring him back in.
Well, I'm on the second, just go over it. All right.
So we want to wait to-
Just Article Three, we'll hold on to Article Three for now.
All right.
Article Four, fiscal year 2020 operating budget?
Move to support.
Actually, we haven't done any of the motions, so we'll just, I'm just going through each one, and then we'll do like a big motion.
So there's no other, the other capital item is that $1.6 million, that's the other big one in that. Everyone's good with that, right? The $1.6 million for the fields?
That's for the fields.
Yep.
Where's that coming from, Nancy?
Borrowing.
I'm sorry, what?
Borrowing.
Borrowing?
Yeah, we'll borrow that. Sorry.
Is your name Nancy?
No, but I'm closer. I'm closer, so.
Article Four is the budget. How's everybody feeling about that? Any issues in any of the departments?
No.
On the enterprise funds?
No, just our regular budget right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. So I just, how did we work out that extra money that we got from, did we put that into more seawalls and more roads? How do we, what do we do? With, was it?
We put it into rectifying some of the budgets in terms of salary, went into some of those. We had to put money back in the council and agent for the GATRA, because they didn't have enough money to support the transportation coordinator, that we were going to charge to them and has to come back on our budget. We put more money into the highway budget-
Right.
And the tree and grounds budget for their expense lines, which I talked about. We put money back in the IT budget. Is that about it?
Is the IT for, to hire the new person?
Very little of it. We had kind of slashed IT back to the bone, so we put some more money back in, because there's some things that were on the schedule to be done, and we want to make sure those get done.
So upgrades or software, or?
Licensing, stuff like that, yep, storage capacity, yeah. One of the new things that came out is social media accounts, all need to be backed up and saved. So all your Facebook accounts, all those things need to be archived now, and that's a lot of storage and a lot of backup that we got to do, so that's something we have to plan for.
So stop posting videos?
Yeah, stop posting videos, it takes a lot of storage.
All right. All right, so Article Five is the enterprise fund for waterways. Article Six, the enterprise funds for the golf course. Article Seven's wastewater enterprise. Article Eight is transfer station enterprise. Article Nine is the water enterprise fund. And then we change to the stabilization fund excess levy, which is Article Ten. We have the revolving fund limits, which is Article Eleven. Hang on, getting down further.
They're all the same, right? Yeah, okay.
Article Twelve, community preservation.
No.
Article Thirteen is the Community Preservation Act reconciliations from prior years.
I just want to double-check something.
On Article, you know?
I'm good, thirteen, I was just looking at the recent.
Article Fourteen is the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 91 liability. It's a general one. Article Fifteen is the local option acceptance of property tax exemptions, asset limit increase. Sixteen is, again, local option acceptance, additional property tax exemptions. Article Seventeen is our local option acceptance, property tax deferral interest rate decrease. That'll be fun. That completes that issue, those issues. Then Article Eighteen turns to the adoption of the room occupancy excise tax. Article Nineteen establishes the transfer station enterprise capital stabilization fund. Article Twenty establishes a waterways enterprise capitalization fund, capital stabilization fund.
We know what you meant.
Article Twenty-One is acceptance of a public way, which is Blanchard Farms Lane. Can I actually stop there for a second?
Did they come before you last week?
They have not come before us.
We asked, yeah, James.
Article Twenty-One, acceptance of a public way, Blanchard Farms Road.
No one's come before the board on that.
No, not yet. That's going to be close. It's scheduled for you for the second right now.
Okay.
So Article Twenty-One-
That'll be close for town meeting, we're going to try to get it in for this town meeting. If not, it's not a huge issue, because we can do it in the fall and still get them on the plow list, so if this was a fall town meeting, I'd say, ew, because they'll miss another year of plowing, but we're going to try to get it on. Everybody's met, but there's some deadlines we have to back out from town meeting. So Sean's working to get everything ready for the second, if we can hit that deadline, we should be good. If not, we'll just kick it to the fall, and it'll be fine.
Okay.
Article Twenty-Two is the zoning bylaw amendment that we, I guess it's flexible open space development. Article Twenty-Three is the zoning bylaw amendment of Green Bush Driftway zoning amendments.
What's the, I'm, oh, so I didn't realize there were two.
I was just going to say, you didn't hear anything about the flexible open space.
Call prep.
Twenty-Two?
Article Twenty-Two.
This is, it came before you before, remember, this is part of the bylaw, the homeowners' association, and then when they revised the bylaw, they-
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
And it was before it was a potential petition article?
Yep.
In the mall?
This, this was the amendment where it can stay with the homeowners' association and not necessarily go back to the town.
Right, it's a continuation.
Who holds, who holds that?
We did have that, yep.
Yeah.
Article Twenty-Three, we just went through, that's the zoning for the Green Bush District. Article Twenty-Four is what, let's see?
Oh, God, does this whole thing in here?
Yep, you got to put it in, here it is. General bylaw amendment of town meetings. What is this, the?
So we don't have to publish the law in the newspaper anymore?
Yeah. Okay, that's good.
That's right.
Yep. Article Twenty-Five is the Ellis.
So this is broken into three articles, we tried it as the one big article, it just was way too unwieldy. So Article Twenty-Five deals with the public safety parcel, and the parcels that we're going to swap for that. Article Twenty-Six deals with the so-called school committee property, and then Article Twenty-Seven deals with the rest of the Ellis, excluding the arts-
Cituit Arts Center.
Cituit Arts Center.
Cituit Art Association, yep. Okay.
Okay.
And then Article Twenty-Eight is going to be that citizens petition for the Humrock Village presidential overlay district. Article Twenty-Nine is another citizens petition for termination of the lease of Go Green.
Did they come before us?
No.
Did they come before you guys?
No. And then Article Thirty is the petition for temporary deferral of building.
They didn't come before us either, right?
Yes, he did, yeah.
He came last week.
You were, okay, he came last week. Yeah, I wish. Three-degree Kansas City weather.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion of accepting Articles One through Twenty-Eight, exclusive of Article Three and Twenty-One.
You mean, supporting as opposed to accepting?
Supporting, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Harris, supporting Articles One through-
Twenty-Eight.
Twenty-Eight, exclusive of Article Three, Articles Three and Twenty-One.
Three is capital, and Twenty-One is public way.
Correct.
Right. And then that's not the petition, that's-
Second.
That is seconded by Ms. Kern.
Wait, wait, we're not supporting.
Right, okay.
The last ones we're not supporting.
Well, what was first? Twenty-Eight, which was one of the overlay district. I thought that's one that you guys wanted to support.
Right, Tony?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so where's the?
The others are twenty-nine or thirty-eight.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't got to the-
So.
So one through Twenty-Eight, minus three, and Twenty-One.
And Twenty-One.
Second.
So I said it was motion by Mr. Harris, I think it was seconded by Ms. Kern, actually.
Oh, yeah.
I'm keeping you guys away. Get on my back, baby. I'll carry you through the night, let's go.
Pay attention down there.
When the red zone, now, come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? No, unanimous. So those articles are taken care of. With respect to Articles Twenty-Nine and Thirty, is there a motion for Twenty-Nine? Either way.
I make a motion on Twenty-Nine not to support Article Twenty-Nine.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor of the motion not to support Article Twenty-Nine, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Zero, so it's five, zero. Article Thirty.
Did we hear from town council on that?
Which one?
Thirty?
Yes, Thirty's not legal as drafted.
Not legal.
As drafted, correct.
I move that the board of selectmen does not support Article Thirty.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Canfield, and seconded by Mr. Harris, not to support Article Thirty. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against? It's unanimous, five, zero. All right. Now, let's go back to the beginning again, for the annual town meeting. I'll take Articles One-
We got to pick them now?
I think-
Can we do it?
You want to do it next time?
Yeah.
All right, we'll do them next time then.
Because if we get a list, it's-
It's easier for us to.
Okay.
Can we get a printout of, oh, sorry, John.
Just a-
I'm just looking at you.
One line?
Whatever you want, it's fine with me.
Just so when we get, when we go through it, we can keep a list and take it with us.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to put Articles one through eighteen in the consent agenda.
Okay.
So the capital, the budget, all the, all the enterprise funds.
Is our second night the ninth?
Our second night would be the next night, yeah.
Okay.
We're getting through this in the first, the eighth.
I mean, right now I have.
For John.
And if you can mark the ones you want to make consent on the list?
Yep, I have a 12 to 13 that I'm going to recommend go on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Review the draft special town meeting warrant, oh, let's get on to that one.
Okay.
It's big, it's going to take a little while to get through it.
Let's see, that's on page.
Didn't we do it?
Forty-one.
No, this is for the, no, seventy-one, sorry.
What page is that on?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Karen have to read that, does she?
No, do I have to?
She's just reviewing. So it's basically, see if the town will appropriate 11.9 million dollars to demolish Section C of the Old Gate School, design, construct, and finish a new senior center, design, renovate, and furnish the Veterans Memorial Gym. That to meet such appropriation authorized by the treasurer of this, approval of the selectmen to borrow up to 11.9 million under the statutory chapter and other enabling authority. Provide, however, that said appropriation is subject to the affirmative vote of the town to exempt amount, so it's basically going through the, top two and a half, last year. And that looks fine to me.
Motion to accept.
Do you need a motion?
Article four.
You don't need to, just reviewing it.
But should we vote for our support on it or no?
I mean, we still have to get a presentation on the new design and make sure the costs are, 11.9 is the number we have, that's subject to change, so.
That was going to be my question.
This is not until the May town meeting, so I don't think we need to do it yet.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'd like to see, see it.
Moving on. We'll see it again. Next thing is liaison reports.
Yeah, wasn't that nice?
Karen, any liaison reports?
I just want to quickly mention that the Council on Aging is going to have information session on March 21st, seven o'clock, at the library, and March 30th, which is Saturday, 10:30 at the Situate Harbor Community Center on exactly that issue to present the details of the senior center proposal, and everyone's invited to attend that.
Where's the one on the 21st?
The 21st is at the library, if you're attending.
Yeah, at seven o'clock, it was supposed to be last.
At seven o'clock, you need to be there, Mr. Vignani. And then the Water Resources Committee, I thought they were coming today, but I guess they're coming soon to talk about single metering proposals that they've been working on, I just want you to have a heads up on that.
Good, good. Sean?
Trying to remember, Jim, you were at the meeting, the public buildings meeting, refresh my, I had notes taken and everything, it was the library issue, what was it, walkways, what was it, the crosswalk, what was it that came over, a little over budget, they were going to come back before us.
It was the controls at the lower door.
Thank you, all right, okay.
So they could buzz people in and out down there.
Oh, we're going to add that, that was eighty-eight.
So what was it, 25,000 or something like that?
You released 25,000, they thought it might come a little bit over, but she was having a hard time getting a hard, getting a firm quote.
Okay.
And it was that component that was going to, it was going to be more than they thought it was going to be.
All right, and then nothing with the crosswalk, that was okay? Sidewalk, all right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only other issue that's not really their issue, it's our issue, is they've asked about a street light there.
Okay.
But I think we need to talk to the neighbors before we just throw in a street light, they're already, they're already complaining about the amount of lights in.
Yeah, actually, I already got calls from the neighbors on that.
They put a wall around the side of it, and that way it wouldn't hit the neighbors.
Hey, Jim, you, you were going to replace that tree that died in the front and maybe put some bushes out there in front of the library?
The tree that's dead, they're going to take that down when they do the walkway this spring.
Are they going to plant something else there?
There's some plantings in there, I'm not sure what, but that, we talked about taking it down, it's coming down as part of the new walkway because the walkway has to kind of cut across there, so we just said, well, we'll just wait and let them take it down and sort of spending money now to take it down on our own.
But if we get something planted that spring, in the spring, then it'll.
Well, once the walkway's done, we can plant some stuff, we won't plant anything until they do the walkway, and that's scheduled for the spring, I don't have a timeline on it, but this is supposed to be done at the spring. And also replacing some of the plantings along the side of the parking lot in the back, some of those trees are dead, they're supposed to be replaced also.
Anything else, Sean?
No, I don't think so, got to think of anything else.
Maureen?
I don't have anything tonight.
Tony?
Nothing, the golf committee's met like three times already, they're really gung ho going into it, so, and they're going to come back with some proposal at some point in time in terms of the looks and really looking at that money that they now have from that loan not being in there and how they think it should be allocated, so.
They're looking for an RFP to get somebody committed to do some preliminary designs and sketches, they already have funding for that, it was approved a couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah.
So I'm working on that now, trying to get something out.
The only thing I do have is to say thank you to the DPW and to everybody for the parade, I thought it was a good parade, I thought it was a great day, it was a nice, I thought it was one of the better parades, actually, I don't know if it was the weather, what it was, it was good.
It was company.
I'm like, yeah, maybe that's it. Yeah, we missed you.
I was there.
You were driving, you were there, I know you were driving.
Let me tell you, that's a popular group I was with, not with you guys.
Oh, I know. That must have been a lot more fun.
Had the specter of Sean behind us on a giant truck.
But that was all, I did want to say that, go ahead, I know you probably want to say it as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we maybe even send a, I don't care, a letter, we can post it up at the DPW, they did a really great job, DPW did, they were cleaning up the roads and getting things ready, I mean, I saw they were blowing the sidewalks, they were moving, parking, what do you call them?
Collins?
Not, no, where you, when you park into a parking lot at the Pier 44, the, at the end to prevent your car from going forward, the cement barriers.
Those are these barriers.
Jersey barriers.
Not Jersey, curb stops.
We know what you mean.
Curb stops, so basically, get them out of the way, and then they went down Front Street, they at least tried to put up whatever flags that were available, they worked really hard, I just want to make sure that they knew, they looked really nice, they did a great job. Aside from that, I went to council on aging, and Karen actually gave the rundown of what was going on for the most part. They're very excited about the annual town meeting or the special town meeting coming up and getting out information, and so I'm happy for them. The other thing was, we had the Minister of Gaelic or Language from Dublin who came, from Ireland, rather, who came, both Sean Kine and his wife, we were also with the General Counsel, Fanula Quinlan, and they gave a talk at the library, which was, it was well received, about the issues of what they're facing and also how it would be nice to further engage in our relationship as a sister city or twin city.
Yeah.
And that was really nice, I wanted to thank Brenda O'Connor and the Sister City Port County Committee for putting that on and also for, for all they've done so far, they've done a great job, and of course, there's going to be an exchange, some members of our board in June, so that's going to be very exciting for the town and for the board members and for further solidifying the relationship that we have between that town or the county and our town, so I'm very excited about that, and I'm happy for Brenda, she's done a great job with that committee. Aside from that, that's it. So, correspondence.
Just a few things, Mr. Chair, we received a letter from MassDOT informing us of our allocation of the Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year 2020, which totals 561,501. So that's good.